Good evening and welcome to the forty-third meeting of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five of the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order. We have, we are all on Zoom this evening, so we'll begin by introductions of ourselves if we would like to go around. Let's see, we can start with Sean.
Sean Fahey, member.
Jim.
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Togaya, secretary.
And Maggie.
Maggie O'Field, member.
And myself, serving as chair, and our staff this evening, we have Cheyenne.
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning.
And Cheyenne will be here for the first part of the meeting, and then we have Julia.
Julia, I'm clear.
Great, thank you and welcome all. The first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of minutes. And thank you for getting these all over. Have the members had a chance to take a look? They are from April tenth, April twenty-fourth, April thirtieth, May fifth, and May sixth. If everyone's good with those, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April tenth, twenty-fourth, thirtieth, May fifth, and sixth.
Thank you, is there a second?
Well, second.
Sorry, Jim, can you clarify as amended?
Yes, as amended.
Thank you.
Right, great, okay, so we'll do a roll call since we're all on Zoom. Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes, great, thank you. And we now have our upcoming next dates for our meeting will be, we have next Thursday, our regular scheduled meeting is May twenty-second. And then we also, our following meeting would be June fifth, it's actually June, is it June fifth or June twelfth? Double check that.
Two weeks from the twenty-second would be the fifth.
That's what I had, okay, the fifth.
But it's usually the second and fourth Thursdays of the month.
Okay.
Right, that's why I was.
I think it.
Yeah, so it's actually the twelfth, that's why.
It's the twelfth.
Yep, yep. Okay, great. So those will be our next meeting dates. And then, let's see, do we have any? Any other items, Cheyenne, that you would like to discuss?
Just the main item is our town meeting articles for June. Those will have to be decided on tonight, sent into the select board so that we can get everything done in time for the warrant.
Great, great, thank you. Good, so.
Thanks, Meredith, there's a Mylar here for Pine Gardens that needs to be signed, just a reminder.
Thank you, I think three people have signed and just were missing two signatures. So whenever people can get a chance to stop in Town Hall, they're on the file cabinet. Thanks, Julia, for that reminder. So if there is, is that it, Cheyenne, and?
Yes, that was our one and all.
Yeah, great, so the next, we can now move to our citizens speak. And if anyone would like to speak, you can please raise your hand and we will welcome you. Introduce you and welcome you. And there's one hand up from the attendees, oh, there's a couple, okay. First, we had Karen Friedman-Hanna. Oh, you just muted yourself.
I just unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Karen Friedman-Hanna, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I live at three Norway Road. And I wanted to thank all of you for doing a really wonderful job, especially Cheryl Togaya's for putting together the twenty-five percent plan. I am really, really hopeful that you will submit that plan. And also, the discussion that's going to be taking place regarding the new business down where the Bank of America building is down at the end of Elliot Street. I wanted to say that I support both plans. Well, I don't know what exactly what that plan is yet, but I support both concepts tremendously. I am very thankful that you're considering putting the twenty-five percent plan to us at Town Meeting. I will support it, I am hopeful. Some of my neighbors did raise, they were a little bit confused by the map with the way that it shows. It says delete Elliot East and delete Elliot West. And I'm hoping that when you're in discussion, I'll be able to have a better understanding about that of whether it still encompasses the areas that are within those red markings, the red outline, or not. A few people were confused by it when I sent out information about it, so I'm hoping that that can be clarified. But again, thank you so much. I am very hopeful that you will be submitting the twenty-five percent plan and that the select board will accept it and the warrant committee will recommend it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we have Meg's iPhone.
Okay, hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, yes, kind of echoing what Karen just said, I want to thank the Planning Board for the tremendous job that you all have done. I know that this really has been a challenging task. So I'm calling in from Geo Field from a softball game, so I'm a little, dogs are barking, kids are playing. But I just would like to say two things this evening. I am in support of the ten percent compliance plan. I feel really strongly that Milton was miscategorized. I am pro-development, I am pro-affordable housing. But unfortunately, as we've seen, sometimes things get mislabeled. And I really feel like this is a strong example of that. I also want to say that I am also in huge support of the new project that will potentially go into the old Bank of America. I think this is a tremendous step forward for Milton and for this area. So I appreciate the, you know, the thoughtfulness around that as well. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm going to try and mute myself again, thank you.
Before you mute yourself, could you give me your last name and your address, please?
Oh, sure, yes, 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 sorry. My name is Meg Meripole, and I live at forty-five Avalon Road.
Thank you.
You're so welcome, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Meg. Next, we have Matt Marong.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Matt.
All right, thank you. My name is Matt Marong at one thirty-six Elliot Street. And I think, like everybody, I'm going to address two items, both the MBTA zoning and the proposal at two Elliot Street. So to start really quickly with MBTA zoning, first, I want to share my sincere gratitude for advancing the twenty-five percent plan for consideration by Town Meeting. It's clear that many members of this board aren't necessarily in favor of this magnitude of zoning for our town. That said, I'm grateful that despite this, and in spite of all the difficulty we've had as a community reaching this point, you were able to advance this to the select board. I appreciate that you've left this option open, since it is currently the only legal option that we have. I know that there are efforts to change that, but until that happens, and it seems that those efforts have no traction so far, this is it. Moreover, this is the only option that acknowledges the reality that we live in. We are a town served by rapid transit via the trolley that I use every time that I go to my office in the city. And we are in the midst of a housing crisis that shows no sign of slowing down. So thank you, a sincere thank you for your hard work on this, the only option that I see as reasonable and that we move ahead toward a resolution of this matter. To switch gears, I also want to throw my support behind the development proposal for two Elliot Street that's in front of you tonight. I'm a close neighbor of Steel and Rye. It is unquestionably one of the best things about living on my end of Elliot Street. When my wife and I looked at our house at first, the Steel and Rye's location and the trolley were the two things that really sold us on this location as the best one in Milton. Steel and Rye has not only been a great restaurant with excellent coffee and baked goods and service, but embodies the character of what I would hope for every gathering place in this town. It's a place to spontaneously run into neighbors, it's a comfortable and welcoming place to work when I need a change of scenery. And it's a place to take family and friends from out of town to introduce them to Milton. Dan and his staff have created an institution that enhances our neighborhood, and I'm confident that they will continue this with their new market. So I can't think of better people to continue to develop our district. And I'm really happy that they are interested in increasing their investment in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we had Brian O'Halloran.
Yes, hi, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Brian O'Halloran, seven Morton Terrace, Precinct Three. Milton's transit categorization by EO HLC and the MBTA should be based on analysis of the existing physical characteristics and operational ability of the Matapan line, as well as the detailed comparison of the Matapan line to other transit systems within the MBTA network. It is significantly, abundantly clear that Milton's classification as a rapid transit community, the EO HLC's MBTA Community Act guideline failed to account for the unique qualities of the Matapan line to distinguish it from the rest of the MBTA and rapid transit systems, and should therefore be classified as an adjacent community. We now know by the MBTA's own admission that Matapan High Speed Line was never converted to rapid transit. Matapan Line remains a highly unique detached suburban trolley system, essentially untouched from when it opened in the nineteen twenties. It should not be considered rapid transit. The Matapan Trolley Service is distinctly dissimilar and operationally inferior to rapid transit. The historic Matapan Ashmont Trolley separates, operates on a short, self-contained standalone route with its own two termini and eight trolley stops, spanning a short distance of a little over two miles in Milton, Dorchester, and Matapan, with no direct access to Boston, and operates as a bus line on railroad tracks. In summary, reclassification will ensure that Milton, its transit riders, and all residents are treated fairly and equitably. Please support a ten percent plan, thank you.
Great, thank you, Brian. And we have a phone number, ending in zero one one. Next. And you're muted.
Hi.
Hello.
Meredith? Hi.
Yes, hello.
Good afternoon, it's Mark Christo calling, hello to you and the board.
Hello, welcome. You can state your address for the record, Mark.
Of course, seventeen Waldo Road. I would like to thank the board for your tireless effort and for your commitment in putting forth a ten percent zoning plan for Milton. Contrary to what some have implied, Milton has not lost its case in court. The case brought before the SJC had nothing to do with correcting an unjust punitive sloppily assigned faulty classification. A court challenge for reclassification of the Matapan Trolley is most credible at this time, considering HLC's inability, or unwillingness perhaps, to address our longstanding concerns. The fact that the SJC called HLC out for not having properly promulgated their own regulations is extremely telling. First, consider that HLC has failed to recognize the operational inferiority of the Matapan Trolley. The trolley is a single vessel with limited carrying capacity and has no ability to transport even one passenger downtown. Also, consider that HLC has failed to recognize that Ashmont is the rapid transit terminus. That is indisputable. The trolley sits entirely beyond that terminus and it only feeds into it, just like a bus. And also, consider that HLC has ignored the MBTA Board of Directors acknowledged abandonment of their very plans to convert the Matapan Trolley to rapid transit, giving no consideration to all the transit-related material changes that would have resulted. How much more time are you willing to give HLC to responsibly step up and do the right thing? Letting the clock run out and hoping to force Milton into compliance to a plan that lacks footing is simply too much and without basis. Worse yet, it buys HLC out. For all the reasons stated, I cannot endorse the twenty-five percent plan, but I am strongly supportive of moving forward to achieve a fair and equitable ten percent plan's adoption. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Mark, are you still there? Could you give me your last name, please?
Sure, Chris O's spelled C-H-R-I-S-T-O.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, and next we have Katie Willett.
This is actually Carolyn Cahill, forty Essex Road, Precinct One.
Welcome, Carolyn.
I just, I'm actually here tonight to first and foremost express my sincere support for the two Elliot Street redevelopment of the former Bank of America. Steel and Rye has become a community gathering spot and has completely immersed itself into our community. This has been a welcome addition, considering our very first restaurant, official restaurant in Milton came in two thousand and nine, not that long ago. I hope the Planning Board works with the developer and the owner of Steel and Rye to put together what's best for our town, which everything I'm seeing so far looks like it's doing that. So that's all I wanted to say, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Okay, next, we have Doug Heine.
Good evening, Doug Heine, four fifty-three Elliot, Precinct Two, also a Town Meeting Member. Wanted to, first and foremost, thank you all for your efforts to put forth both a ten percent plan and a twenty-five percent plan. And I really thought about the board meeting last week a lot over the past few days. And the more I thought about it, the more I was just really impressed and grateful at the actions that the board took because I know it wasn't easy. And I think at some, on some level, maybe it was the meeting with HLC earlier in the day, that kind of a sense of realism, and that might not be the right word, but I guess, you know, prudence, you know, really crept in and thought, you know, this is the best we can do. And I think actually, Mr. Davis might have even made that comment when voting for the twenty-five percent plan. But I wanted to thank you because I know it's difficult to do something that you don't want to do, but you have to do. And that really kind of speaks to me because it's, it's a lot of, it covers a lot of the mixed emotions that I've had about the MBTA Communities Act for a number of years, and I've hated to see kind of what this town has gone through over the last couple of years, where we're really not acting neighborly toward one another. And I think your efforts last week went a long way toward healing the town. And by putting forward both a ten and a twenty-five percent plan, you don't foreclose any options. You keep options open, and I know that's been a common theme of this body over the past year. And I want to commend you for that, that, to me, what you did last week in voting for a plan that maybe you don't like, but you knew was the right thing, that showed a lot of character, it showed a lot of character. And I know you invest a lot of time in this, more, more so than I think any of us can ever imagine. And I wanted to thank you for your time, for your thoughtfulness, and for your character. I really appreciate that from the bottom of my heart, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jeff Goodman. Welcome, Jeff. If you can unmute yourself.
Hi there, sorry, Jeff Goodman, five ninety-nine Adam Street. Hi, welcome, thanks for having me. First off, I agree that I would much prefer to be in the ten percent. However, I feel like that decision has been made for us, and we need to stop fighting this and spending money that would be better spent in other ways. I also would like to thank the consultants, who I think did a great job last week. And even though a lot of this was coming down to the wire, I thought they showed a lot of patience and grace in helping us come up with two different plans that hopefully gets us past this point in the town's history. And I also agree with Carolyn Cahill that Steel and Rye has been an excellent addition to the town, and I support their new venture, thank you.
Great, thank you. And next, we have Kathleen O'Donnell.
Thank you very much, Kathleen O'Donnell, at twelve Belcher Circle, Precinct Seven. And I call in to, first of all, echo the appreciation that's been expressed by all the prior speakers for the hard work that you guys have done to address the concerns of, you know, my neighborhood in particular that were raised by the former zoning article, and that you've tried to move this along in, you know, in a way that sort of addresses the successful, the loss case in the SJC. And this sort of effort by everybody to sort of include more areas in town to reduce the impact in East Milton. But, you know, unlike some of the prior speakers, I would point out that we did lose the case at the SJC. The law is legal, the AG can enforce it, and the Commonwealth can refuse to give us grants. And, you know, that has an impact all across the town, not just in the areas that are affected by this overlay district. For example, grants that we are trying to get for improving the marshlands and the deposit probably won't be awarded if Milton's name appears on the application, so we've been told. So it has an absolute impact on us already. And so I know that everybody has said that, you know, you've listened to the residents and all that sort of thing. But I would say that when this article for the twenty-five percent or the ten percent goes forward, that you've only had one public forum. And so a lot of people don't understand what has changed from the last version we looked at a couple of years ago. And so, you know, I would say that in advance of Town Meeting, I think the Planning Board and staff are really going to have to do a lot more about reaching out to townspeople to explain the differences. If you go forward with twenty-five, or if you go forward with ten, people need to understand what is going on. And I don't think they do, they think they maybe are looking at the same article they looked the last time. And so I think that's important to get a lot more outreach than has been done so far. And I do, I do express my concern with the idea of going for ten percent, which we know is not legal. So we continue to violate the law, we continue to fail to get grants, we continue to lose money. We could go back to court and address the issue. We could go back to court and address the issue of the reclassification of the Matapan line, but we spent three hundred thousand dollars on that case the last time. And when that argument was raised by our counsel, the Supreme Judicial Court Chief Justice cut him off. So, I don't see the point of going forward and spending another three hundred thousand dollars on a case that would be better handled by addressing the continued negotiations with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities instead of going to court. Everyone knows if you're a litigator, I'm not, but I've always been told by litigators that that's the last thing you want to do because it's an outcome you cannot control. Negotiations, we can. And so, I highly recommend you proceed with the original vote to do the twenty-five percent and to continue to negotiate the fine points of that twenty-five percent plan with HLC. And the ten percent plan, as far as I'm concerned, is a non-starter. People who have taken an oath to defend the Commonwealth of Massachusetts laws and that sort of thing should be following the law, not leading us down to continual violation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have two more and then we'll have to, if you can be quick, we'll get both of you in. And then we're going to have to move on to our next subject. So, I'm seeing, we have Helmhunger.
There's Liz Goodman.
Oh, I thought she took her hand down. I'm sorry, Liz Goodman.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to say, so I'm Liz Goodman. I live at five ninety-nine Adam Street in Precinct Seven. I just wanted to echo what Kathleen O'Donnell said about pointing out that people have this misunderstanding about what's going forward. And I noticed that last year, even during the vote, that people had a misunderstanding that if they voted to allow this to pass, then we were automatically going to have an extra thousand homes in town. Whereas what we were just trying to vote for is to do the right thing by the law. I felt there was a lot of miscommunication around that, especially living in East Milton Square. I think we do need to, like she said, we need to stick with that original twenty-five percent. We need to actually do what the law is telling us that we have to do. There are ways to deal with it once we go past, but we can't continue to hemorrhage money to fight something that has been decided. And every other town around us has decided that this is what we need to do. I also want to express support for two Elliott Street. I think Steel and Rye is a great location. I think that business has done a wonderful job. And I just think that area is also a great area. So, that's my other, those are my other two cents.
Thank you very much.
And Helmhunger? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right, that's all right. Thank you. And Helmhunger will be our last speaker for tonight because we will need to move on.
Hello.
The phone number before Helmhunger.
I think that's Mark Cristo who spoke earlier.
Okay, forgot to put his hand down.
Sorry, okay.
Hello, thank you.
Yes.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to echo some of the things that were said tonight and express my sincere thank you and gratitude. And congratulations to the planning board, the town staff, and the various consultants that worked diligently over the last several years, especially over the last year to get us to this point of a compliant twenty-five percent plan. And I look forward to the next steps where we bring this forward to the public and have robust and sometimes difficult conversations as we proceed to the town meeting in June, where hopefully we'll have a meeting and a conversation with the public that will get us over the finish line in compliance with the state. Again, I just wanted to say thank you to the planning board. All the members have worked very hard, a lot of hours, and look forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we are excited that we will be hearing from two Elliott Street. But before we opened that public hearing, I just felt like we needed to just discuss something as a board, which is critical because the select board is currently meeting. Since our last meeting, and I think many of you who were at that meeting and know how hard we were working to do both a ten percent and a twenty-five percent, I personally have been struggling with this decision, with the decision to send a ten and twenty-five percent. Particularly, as Kathleen O'Donnell mentioned, that we have not even had a chance to offer a public forum for the twenty-five percent, for people to understand what would be, what impacts that would create. For many reasons, I am concerned and feel that really moving the twenty-five percent may be premature. And as there are many uncertainties right now, including the restoration of Milton's reclassification and the unfunded mandate, I also felt that a lot of the board members that I was pushing for that twenty-five, but that a lot of the board members felt uncomfortable voting for that. Therefore, tonight, I just wanted to provide the opportunity to open that discussion with our board and confirm whether we indeed do want to move that twenty-five percent forward or do we want to, the ten percent and the twenty-five, or do we just want to move a ten percent forward at this time? So, I just would like to invite my fellow board members and understand how difficult this is for our board. And we understand the responsibility to do the right thing for the town. So, Cheryl, I see your hand up if you would like to go first.
Yes, thank you. I think we have a responsibility and an obligation to move forward, at least with a twenty-five percent plan. And I'm willing to go forward with both as a way to see what would happen between now and the June town meeting. I don't think we should deprive town meeting members who are elected to represent the entirety of our precincts of the opportunity to vote, to become compliant, and to become eligible again for grants that we are no longer eligible for. It's not our decision to decide whether to pursue any legal actions. It's our responsibility to deliver zoning options. And I know that people still believe and people are working on an opportunity that they think might exist with HLC for a reclassification. I've pressed those of you who have been in meetings to be clear about what you've heard. It's, I don't think anything has been decided and given clear direction given back on your meetings and the results of the submission of that ten percent option that we submitted to HLC. So, I think we should proceed with submitting both the ten percent and the twenty-five percent. And if we have some decisions before the June town meeting, then one of them can either be withdrawn or sent back or denied. And then we would have at least the option available to us to become compliant by the deadline of July thirteenth.
Great, Cheryl. Thanks. I see Jim has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Meredith. I guess you're right. I have been thinking about this since our last vote. And what's pushing me to rethink it is that I've heard that the Falcone project in East Milton Square, because we've overlaid them with about fifty more units, they're thinking about adding more units. I didn't hear it directly from Falcone, but it might be a rumor, right? So, if that happens, more units means more stories. You can only go up in that area, so on that parcel. So, I think if we do seven or eight, if this goes through and we have seven or eight stores in East Milton Square, I think that would be devastating to East Milton. I think it would be devastating and set a dangerous precedent for Milton in general as a town. And I don't want that. You know, I put those units there thinking they would never be built. And if there's a chance that they're going to be built now, I think that's a risk I'm not worth, I personally don't want to take. And I think the only way to remove that risk is to remove those additional units. So, it leads me to kind of like my next point about this is that we're still tweaking districts, right? Cheryl made some suggestions with the Fairmount area. Now, I think we should adjust East Milton Square. And then if what's true in East Milton Square may be true at Seven Eleven Randolph, right? I mean, who's to say they won't add a few more stories, units, whatever? I think we have to go back and rethink that one. So, I don't think the twenty-five percent plan is ready yet. I think it needs to be scrutinized a little bit more. And I think Kathleen O'Donnell might be right, where we do need a lot more public input. We should have at least one more forum. Even if we schedule it a week or two from now, we should have that. But we have a lot of work to do here and I think it might have been a little premature. And then we also need net new numbers before we vote on anything. I think in the future, we kind of rushed that and skipped over that, but I really think we have to look at net new numbers and see what's going where as a true comparison. So, that's where I am right now. I mean, I've got more, but I'll stop there.
Maggie, I see your hand up. If you'd like to go. Are you muted?
Oh, sorry. So, as you know, I abstained from voting last week and I abstained because I didn't feel like I had enough information to take a position. And if I was feeling like I didn't have enough information, and I've spent three years in this chair listening and talking with all of you guys, listening to the consultants, how could the public realistically understand and have enough information? And I still don't have enough information, even, you know, a few days later. So, I was hesitant to vote no last week. But if I have an opportunity again, I would vote no. And I didn't say this last week, but one of the reasons I, which is something that's really bothering me, is I do feel like during last week's citizen's speak, a resident kind of was a bully and stated that if the planning board didn't put forth a twenty-five percent plan, then he would petition the select board to put forth their twenty-five percent plan. And I don't take kindly to bullies. And I don't think that's a respectful thing to say to an elected board, especially a board who's been working on this for three years. And no good decision ever comes from a position of fear. And if a decision is made out of fear, then it can only lead, I think, to a negative outcome. And if this is going to be the new reality that residents in this town don't trust the work of the planning board and they're just going to hijack the process and go straight to the select board, then why do we need a planning board? Like, why are we needed? Why waste all of our time if we're being threatened that our work has no value and no respect? So, I'm a little annoyed at that.
Maggie, let's just stay on the ten and twenty-five because I want to let everyone have a chance to speak on that. And I appreciate your comments.
And then, I think we all support a ten percent. I think we should move forward with the ten percent. I don't think we actually voted to move a ten percent plan forward to the select board and the Warren Committee. I am afraid, following Jim's comments about the Falcone building, we all know that Falcone and Corcoran got five million dollars, you know, an interest-free loan to proceed with their forty B. And the understanding is they're going to receive another five million dollars from the state when they're a little bit further along in their. So, I am afraid that they're going to take advantage. And we don't have any net new numbers. And if you're going to open up the discussion if we should move a twenty-five percent forward, then I'm ready to be more definitive in my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know Cheryl, you have your hand up. Sean, did you want to comment at this point or wait till after Cheryl?
I'll wait till after Cheryl. I have some questions, but let Cheryl go, please.
All right, Cheryl.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things with respect to timeline and forums. You know, right after the referendum over a year ago, I suggested to all of you that we should develop a very robust public engagement plan that we needed to make the public aware of what the Supreme Judicial Court's decision was and what we were going to do as a result of that decision. We spent fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer funds working with UTIL for the last year plus. We were working at a good pace through the summer until the fall, when a resident advised many of you and tried to advise the board as counsel that we shouldn't be working on a twenty-five percent compliant plan at all until the SJC issued its decision. So, the public forum that we had scheduled for November was canceled or rescheduled until the middle of April. We didn't resume, then, we didn't resume work with UTIL until after that Supreme Court decision in January. And even all along, I've continued to say we needed to hold more public forums and we needed to have a realistic timeline. And so, I take some of the comments about how we're at this time and we need more time. We've had ample time. We've had almost three years to work on this and we have worked on it. And we should have had more public input, but we are up against yet another deadline that keeps us out of compliance. And we have a responsibility to use the next six weeks or however many weeks it is between now and June sixteenth town meeting to bring the public up to speed with where we are. And I don't think we should continue to continue to spend taxpayer dollars chasing plans that we know aren't going to work. We have a plan that can be tweaked, but we have a plan that works, that has a lot of work that's gone into it. And I think we should move forward with it and let the voters at town meeting make a decision.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl. Sean?
Well, I am certainly struggling with this. And I've struggled with it since our meeting last week. You know, I think my point of view was pretty well outlined last week. And yet, you know, when Cheryl proposed, I seconded. So, I certainly was advocating to support what Cheryl had in mind for the twenty-five percent plan. So, that's a fact. But, you know, I am struggling with this. You know, one of the things that I, you know, that plan has one thousand five hundred and twenty-six units for the side of town that's essentially from the Milton Station area all the way over through Matapan, one thousand five hundred and twenty-six units. You know, and it breaks down for five hundred and fifty-five for Elliott Street. You know, that's the TS one, two, and three, Milton Station, East Western Bridge, six hundred and nine units. And then Matapan and Blue Hills, three hundred and sixty-two. So, that's a total of one thousand five hundred and twenty-six zoned units for that side of town. I think it's overwhelming, you know, that side of town and it's overwhelming our neighborhoods. And the only reason we're overwhelming our neighborhoods and overwhelming that side of town is because we have something that I think is unjust and unfair and improper, and it's driven by the classification. I have very strong concerns for the negative impacts that many people in town can't see or don't see or maybe prefer not to see. strong concerns for the negative impacts that many people in town can't see or don't see or maybe prefer not to see. I am aware of the express concern of a three hundred thousand dollar case to litigate if it costs us that to litigate. But I think an awful lot of people are ignoring what the cost would be if we ever had twenty-five percent zoning. And what happens to our town in the years ahead, I think three hundred thousand dollars is, will pale in comparison to what we will pay as a town. And I, you know, obviously if we're paying it as a town, it's the taxpayers that are paying it. So I think the cost ahead is many, many, many multiples greater than the expense of pursuing classification. I do believe that our select board should pursue classification. It's, it's the opportunity, although a speaker earlier tonight said that we lost, we didn't lose. This, this, the fact is that there's been no ruling on classification. You know, I said it last week, it has yet to be adjudicated. Nothing has changed with respect to the adjudication. And that opportunity exists. And, you know, I would urge our select board to pursue adjudication and get to a conclusion. If our classification has been fair and get there through the court system. We, we started in January of twenty-four talking with HLC or meeting with HLC. So it, it's not that HLC is not aware of this, but HLC has done nothing to provide us relief from the twenty-five percent. Nothing. And it appears to me that HLC is reluctant to do anything to provide relief to Milton. And the only way Milton can get relief is if we pursue our classification and go back through the court. I, I, you know, the ten percent zoning that we submitted. That is a that is a a zoning plan that we one hundred percent undoubtedly are responsible for. We are within a half mile of three commuter rail stations. And, you know, I've never been a zero percent person. I've always been a ten percent and potentially more than ten percent. I think we have an opportunity to increase beyond ten percent. But without an opportunity to have a compromise from, from HLC for something that might be a middle ground between twenty-five percent and ten percent. I don't like being in the position where we're pushed and forced to twenty-five percent. You know, I, I don't know if people that are watching tonight saw Senator Driscoll's presentation last week to the Senate body. It might be, I don't know, it might be fifteen minutes long. Maybe it's a little longer, maybe it's twenty minutes long, but it was an excellent presentation. You know, and it outlined Senator Driscoll's reasoning for why he feels, you know, Milton is being, you know, unfairly treated in this. We also have the leader of the House who has come out and stated essentially the same thing, that he feels that Milton isn't being fairly treated. We have residents, you know, there are residents that were once in favor of the twenty-five percent that are now speaking for and advocating for a compromise between ten percent and twenty-five percent. And, and I didn't expect that, but that's out there. You know, RKG's cost analysis that says that this would be cash positive. I don't believe that for a moment. We have no internal or second-party assessment of cost analysis. So we're placing all of our faith in RKG's cost analysis, and I don't think that's sound judgment for a zoning initiative of this magnitude. You know, and I do believe that RKG's cost analysis is, is not inclusive of all of the real and actual cost outcome. Just the simple fact that their projection includes only two hundred and seventy-five additional students. Two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five additional students from zoning that would add two thousand four hundred and sixty-one new units. That alone should cause everybody concerned because that can't be real. I've talked at length about what I refer to as the empty nester transition. When these units are built, families that live in Milton that no longer need the homes with the number of bedrooms they have, they likely would sell their home and, and move into one of the units that would be built. And when I questioned RKG what they had calculated for the number of of students that would be derived from that, they calculated zero. And the reason they said they calculated zero was because they didn't have a model to use to derive a calculation. Well, I don't think that's responsible because we all know that many of the residents in town, if they have the chance to move into one of these units, they very likely will and their home will then be occupied by a family. So to assume that we're not gonna have students derived from that transition is wrong. So the, the cost of this, I believe, hasn't necessarily been assessed. And when you consider a public initiative and whether it's a federal initiative, a state initiative, or a local initiative, when when has an optimistic outlook in terms of cost ever really materialized? The answer is probably almost never, you know, and our most recent example of this is with our fire stations. You know, we set forth with a budget to build three fire stations and what have we learned? We only had enough money to build two. So for those that think that this is gonna be cash positive and it's not gonna create a financial burden for the town of Milton, I, I think that's a, a very, very risky and, and I will go as far as to say an incorrect supposition. So I have huge concerns with twenty-five percent. And I'll think a little bit more about this, you know, as we continue this conversation. And I would like Meredith to understand if we withdraw this, what is there an opportunity, what happens?
So if we vote, if we vote to withdraw the twenty-five percent, I, I think we all are in agreement, at least a ten percent is what we would want to submit to the warrant committee and to the select board. We would make, we would make a vote, and the reason why I'm putting it on early is because the select board are meeting tonight as well discussing zoning articles, and I just wanted to, when they get to the agenda item, be able to hear from what, what the intent is of the planning board. So that they are clear with decisions that they need to make. Is that helpful? So once we make, once we decide what we want to do, Cheyenne is going to send an email to Nick, just letting him know.
So I think it's completely irresponsible to be at the same night that the select board is meeting to decide to make a different plan of action. And I think it's also disrespectful to the applicant who has a public hearing scheduled for seven oh five to be
Right, I don't want to spend much more time.
For this conversation. We have, some of you said that UTIL should pull all-nighters in order to do the work that they prepared for us that we have yet to discuss.
No one said that, Cheryl. That is not, that is not accurate. People did not say UTIL should pull all-nighters.
I think actually what happened was UTIL had said they wouldn't pull all-nighters. I think that's what was said.
In any case, they did a lot of work that in between our meeting on Thursday and today, and we have that work to review yet. And I, I think we should give that careful consideration and I would rather not delay the further, the seven oh five public hearing for the two Elliott Street project. And so that we can come back to this discussion and give it the due consideration that it deserves and review the work that's been submitted, not only by UTIL, but by Nick Milano in terms of the zoning language, which I spent time this afternoon reviewing and providing edits for. We can't do that and continue to delay the public hearing in good faith to the applicant, in my opinion.
Yes, no, and I, that is, we, we need to get through that tonight because we need to get to the warrant committee, but this is an important conversation because it's gonna direct that later conversation. I told Nick of my concerns and he asked that we, we make a decision early in the meeting and let, so he can let the select board know. So that's why I'm and my apologies to, to the applicant for two Elliott, but I'd like to wrap up this conversation in, in the next five minutes.
Can we wrap it up without having a review of the materials? Thinking presumptions about rumors that somebody can do development when they have a six-story building approved and we haven't reviewed the fact that what's in this zoning allows for four and a half stories. So we haven't talked about the realities of what's being proposed against rumors that I haven't heard. But this, we need to work, we need to work on facts and we need to review the presentation and show what the facts are in the presentation and
Cheryl, we did agree, we agreed to a plan. I mean, what we voted on last, last week was the districts and the number of units. That's what we and we now are working on the zoning language. So we know and it was presented to the residents publicly what that plan looks like. So even if we, if it's minor tweaks, you know, I get that. It's, it's more of the impact of the overall decision of a twenty-five percent plan at this time. So I understand your feeling on this and I, and we've done, I, I think our work was not in vain. I mean, we may ultimately need to use a twenty-five percent plan. I just don't think we're, to me, I don't, I don't think we're there yet. And we're out of time. We have to get it to the warrant, we have to get something to the warrant. And I fully intend to have a plan set forth for our June town meeting. And I, I think it should be the ten percent at this point and then, you know, shall we need, if we need to, we, we have a twenty-five percent plan that's pretty much ready to go.
So back to my comments about facts. Sean, you made a comment that we are going to have two thousand four hundred and sixty-one new units. And we know that those, that's not true. And we know that it's more likely to be sixteen hundred or less net new units when we factor in the existing housing units that are in these districts. And so, you know, I think we have to be careful about using fear or saying things that may cause fear if that's not even the intent of the speakers who've said them. But saying things about Falcone can do more buildings, so they're going to suddenly change their plans. Or we have more net new than what we actually have. And then also speaking about Senator Driscoll's bills and/or amendment, amendment that he withdrew and other amendments that failed. There's been amendments put forth to change our designation and to other things about the MBTA Communities Act, none of which have advanced. Their final regulations were issued not long ago. You know, there's, at a certain point, we have to accept where we are, as other speakers have said. I don't support just sending a ten percent plan. We, I think it's our obligation to submit both.
Okay, all right.
It would be an awful shame if, if, if we submitted our plan, it got voted in, and then the unfunded mandate ruling came down. And it was determined that towns actually would get money for this mandate, the MBTACA Act. That would be such a huge missed opportunity. And I think that, given the fact that the town's broke and we did a nine-point-five million dollar override, that we actually should wait to see what that unfunded mandate ruling is. And the way I understand that, and this is not fact, I don't know for a fact, but I think within the next thirty or sixty days, that's gonna come down. I think in June, a ruling is due. I personally am dying to see what happens there and I, and I'm almost sure that if we pass zoning, we lose the opportunity to benefit from that unfunded mandate ruling.
But so you're saying, take away the, the right of town meeting to actually make a decision? You're saying the five of us should make a decision whether town meeting has the option to be compliant, to vote, to make a decision themselves? You'd rather the five of us decide we should not deliver them that option?
Well, we would make the decisions all along, Cheryl. At some point, we have to keep making the decisions.
I would like to just follow up on a couple of facts too on about RKG. So RKG, we hired RKG to do a fiscal analysis. And at the time that we hired them, I can speak for myself. I did not know that RKG was paid by the state of Massachusetts to build the compliance model. So they built the compliance model that every single one of these hundred and seventy-seven towns used. They then got paid by the state to be consultants for, for some of the hundred and seventy-seven communities. And during the process with RKG, we learned that, we also learned that their beginning numbers were incorrect. They didn't even have the population of Milton accurate. So the starting number was incorrect. They also, the compliance model did not allow for parcel assemblage. They couldn't even tell us that. So this goes back way back. So for those people listening, we have been through this. We have made certain decisions. I have made certain decisions based on information that we've been receiving for the past three years. So Sean has focused on the number of school kids that he questions and I question everything else about it because I think they entered with a bias and they should not have been listed as one of the consultants. So that's a fact because they stated that publicly. They stated publicly that the population was incorrect and they didn't have the information at the time to fix it. And they stated publicly that they're the ones who created the compliance model. So those are facts.
Okay, all right. So I think I, I don't think there's new information. I think we've, we've all struggled with this. And I think we've done a lot of really good work in getting us you know, close to a twenty-five, but at this time, I, I think we need to make a decision and we need to take a vote so we can let the select board know what we would like to do. And the process on that would be, we would need to we actually need to take a vote on the ten percent and we need to take a vote to rescind our vote on the, on the twenty-five percent plan. And if we can have a motion, I'm gonna open it up back up for discussion.
I, I don't think we can take, I don't think we can take a vote on the ten percent without reviewing what the language is that we'd be voting on, which is what was submitted to us as zoning.
Okay.
We can't submit something that's not zoning. And so
Well, that's how we voted on, we voted on the twenty-five percent that way. So maybe then we don't need to rescind that vote because we didn't have that language either.
Right. I thought, I mean, my understanding was that we were going to vote the language tonight. We voted to the intent of that what we approved was always needed to be finalized by UTIL, right?
So let's, let's vote on the intent. All right, let's vote on the intent then, because that's all that we, we need to do this per Nick's request at this point at the meeting.
So can I just ask all of you? I didn't hear, I maybe got three emails since our last meeting, two thanking us and one saying that they supported a ten percent. So how did all of you between Thursday and tonight all of a sudden totally decide that this was not the direction that we should go in? Was there some kind of meeting I missed? Was there some kind of email exchange amongst a lot of people that I missed that somehow I wasn't included on because I have a different point of view on this? I'm just curious because you all have a very similar
I think it's what we had.
Over the last, over the weekend, over Mother's Day weekend, you all have a new reflection.
I think it's really, it's really insulting that you're asserting that you're excluded from a discussion that we had. I, I, I'm sure you have volumes of emails from people you communicate with, Cheryl, that had never shared with us. I, I, I am insulted that you'd even assert that.
I'm asking, all I'm doing was ask if there was anything that I missed, Sean. I didn't miss I'm just wondering how this changed so rapidly over a few days, period of time.
I don't, there's nothing that I know that you've missed.
It might be so simple as when it was brought up tonight, I was able to rethink my decision.
I'm consistent. I haven't changed my position and how it allows me is to take a more firm stance and however And however, um, I know people don't like me talking about my business here on the planning board. But it's mother, it was Mother's Day weekend and I was super busy and I've had so many people come in and, um, express their concerns about the 25%. They had questions about the 25%. They said, oh, is the planning board putting, are they endorsing a 25% plan? Because that's not what they've heard from the planning board for the past three years. And I said, I am not endorsing a 25% plan. Um, there was some pressure, you know, put, this is how I explain it. There was pressure, I felt there was pressure, um, put on the planning board at the last, um, week's meeting. And maybe that's why some members felt like they were pressured into it because it was either we do it or we, it was going to be circumvented. So that's how I explained it. But I've been pretty consistent. Um, so I haven't, I've worked all weekend. So.
I don't think I have to explain myself. I mean, I spoke pretty strongly last week about how I felt about our case and, um, the pathway to resolve this through adjudication. And, um, nothing's really changed in my mind in terms of pursuing that. I feel like the town should defend its residents against a 25% zoning plan by utilizing the courts to adjudicate and determine what our classification should be. That's no different than what I had said in our last meeting, and I feel really strongly. Senator Driscoll's presentation was pretty influential for me. Here he is, the senator representing our area. And, and he is an ardent 10% person. Um, that is very influential for me too.
I would agree. That presentation, and I did have a lot of people to reach out to me with, um, with concerns individually. So, um, but even prior to that, I, I really felt like we were under a deadline. I was trying to get this pushed so we could get this to the warrant committee. And I regretted, I, I felt like it was hastily done. And I, I know we've had a lot of time. Um, people will say that we've had a long time to work on this, Cheryl, but the regulations only came out a few weeks ago. So there have been a lot of unknowns and there's still a lot of unknowns. And I just want to make sure that, that we are not putting something forward that, that we will regret. And I know I'm comfortable with the 10%. Um, it's the impacts, the potential impacts of the 25%, I just don't know if I'm prepared.
So this board promised the residents of the town to deliver both a 10% and a 25% plan. And the emergency regs and the final regs are, um, virtually the same, a few minor, uh, adjustments that, basically reaffirmed, yeah, reaffirmed that we were a rapid transit community as of February. Um, so we've known that we, that's the view of HLC is that we're a rapid transit community. And they communicated that, uh, my understanding is to both you, um, Meredith and Sean, as well as, um, our town administrator and assistant, uh, planning director. And so really the only way to not be considered out of compliance is for a different body, the select board, um, to, well, we'll still be out of compliance as far as HLC is concerned. But either the law changes and which to date hasn't succeeded, as I mentioned, or the select board makes a decision to pursue legal, legal action. But we don't have the authority to make that decision. So the things that we have authority to do are present, um, a 10% and a 25% uh, compliant plan through the work, um, that we've done. And through, uh, the work of, that the town staff and our consultant and taxpayer dollars have funded, um, to give the town the opportunity, uh, to continue to negotiate, but also to have a compliant plan in hand for town meeting in June, um, so that we can, uh, stop the, the loss of funding that we currently sit in. I mean, there's, it's, uh, folks have been keeping track. Uh, it was mentioned $300,000 in legal fees. There's also the, um, the referendum, the cost of the referendum vote itself at 40,000. There's lost grants, which pushing, uh, well over, uh, a million dollars. And, um, that's going to continue. Um, and I, I think from a point of view of our responsibility as people who took an oath to uphold the law, the law is what the law is at the moment. And town meeting members took an oath too. And if we don't get them an opportunity to vote on a compliant plan, what does that say about us as the body that's supposed to deliver town meeting, uh, the zoning, uh, that allows them to decide, uh, what the right path? I continue to think that the five of us have an obligation to deliver the zoning. It is not our obligation to decide whether we remain, or whether we will be compliant or not. That's up to town meeting and, and we should give them that opportunity to decide it.
I, I appreciate that.
I think it's our obligation to support our state rep and our state senator and all their efforts they're making on Capitol Hill. So if they're up there saying that we, you know, we're a 10% community, we have a hard time finding 25% and then we just pop up a 25% plan that is pretty flawed, in my opinion, and we're undermining their efforts. And that's doing a disservice to the, to the, uh, all the Miltonites who actually voted for those guys. They're working real hard to try and represent Milton and we're basically undermining them with a 25% plan. Um, I also want to add that, you know, before this mandate came down from the state, I didn't meet one resident who said, hey, you know what we ought to do? We should increase ours housing stock, our zoning by 25% because this is going to be great for the town. Nobody wants this. It's been forced upon us. It's a mandate that's been hammered down, um, on Milton. Um, and, and now people might want it, but they don't want it in their backyard. They want it when it's on Granite Street. Or they want it off of Elliot Street. I mean, it's just, nobody is happy with 25%. And as long as there's a decent chance for 10, that's what I'm going to support. And I, I'm not going to say I'm one of them, but I do know that there are plenty of people who would want to see this taken all the way to the US Supreme Court where they feel that we'll actually get a fair shake in a non-biased court. Now, you know, that's, that's one side. The other side is 25% and the middle of the road, the compromise is 10. Um, if you're saying the select board's going to get together with the resident that was pretty adamant about giving us an ultimatum at the last meeting, that if we don't do what he's gonna, I can't control the select board and what they do. I think that's no different than a developer saying, if you don't approve my development, I'm going to go 40B. I mean, nobody likes it when that happens, but, um, if ultimatums are where we're at, I agree with Maggie. What's the point of having a board here?
Okay.
So, all right, can I just ask about, uh, ask about this? Everyone's saying that a, a resident giving an ultimatum, residents don't have the authority to give us ultimatums. And I think residents have, have asked us to do what they think is, um, the prudent thing to do, which is give town meeting the opportunity to take this vote. So I, I don't like the characterization of us being threatened. I don't think anyone felt threatened at our last meeting, um, about a vote that they needed to take. I think people felt perhaps conflicted, but threatened?
Well, I felt backed into a corner, honestly. If I didn't vote for this 25%, this guy would go to the select board and do his own thing.
Okay.
I'm not threatened by that.
I see Cheyenne saying, really?
Heavily on my decision.
I think
One more thing, if we have time, June 16th for a town meeting is an arbitrary date. It's an arbitrary date. If we feel like we need more time, perhaps we should petition the select board to push back the town meeting date. And that would allow possibly the, um, Plymouth Superior Court to make the decision on, um, the unfunded mandate. It would also allow our Senator Driscoll to make, um, his case with more of his peers, uh, at Beacon Hill. So I would think a prudent thing that the board, our board could do would be request more time and push back the, the, um, town meeting from June 16th, which is an arbitrary date, which, um, I know some people, but the argument is people go away on vacation. But you know what? This is a very, very impactful zoning change for the whole entire town. And if people feel a, a strong way, one way or the, one way or the other, they should reschedule their vacations.
Okay.
On vacation.
So I have
Thank you. You know what? Cheyenne had her hand up. I just wanted to hear if Cheyenne had something to say.
Yeah, I just have a little bit to add. I think on one note, yes, June 16th is an arbitrary date. But, uh, we have had July 14th for a while now. So we've had a little bit of time to get some stuff in the works. But on another note, overarching, um, it's been an hour on this topic. And we do have our applicants here. They're supposed to start an hour ago. So I think, um, we do need to figure out something, whether we want to wait till the end of this meeting to take a vote after we review materials, which, you know, we did have UTIL work on it for the last few days. So they spent a lot of time and, you know, we're spending a lot of money having them do that. So I think it couldn't hurt. But again, we do our, our applicants waiting. Um,
Yes, I agree.
We should be a little more respectful of their time.
I would like to continue the conversation after the public hearing on two Elliott Street. I think there's plenty to continue to talk about.
I know Nick has asked that we make a decision and then we can talk, whatever we decide.
Why is Nick dictating how we're making a decision, Meredith?
He's requested to give the information to the select board because it's, uh, an item on their agenda.
They, they, as far as they're, they know, as far as I know, this board did not talk about this until this meeting. So as far as the select board knows, we took a vote last Thursday. So I don't understand why our timing of this discussion and whether it's rushed or not, when we're, when we have a, a public hearing scheduled at 7:05, it, it, it doesn't seem right to me. I mean, this board took an action last week. And as far as, uh, the select board knows, that's the, still the action that's sitting on the table. So why are they asking us to reconsider something? I think it's
I think it's the determination.
I don't think it is.
Cheryl, I, I think it's the, it's going to determine how we spend our time later this evening and the material that we're going to be going through. Because if, if we're not going to move forward with the 25, if we're going to vote for that, we should focus our time on the 10% and going through the zoning language on that.
I disagree. I think we need to talk about both. We have both prepared for tonight. We asked UTIL to spend a ton of time on it. Uh, our town administrator put zoning language together. I reviewed that language. I spent a lot of time looking at it before that even arrived in preparation for this meeting, not knowing that this was going to be reopened. And I feel as if we need to spend the time to discuss it before taking a vote.
So I, I would like to just say, I've been an applicant before. I do apologize to the applicants. But as an applicant, you understand that sometimes you have to wait an hour or two or three. So I do apologize in advance to the applicants. They are Milton residents. So I would think that they would be, um, appreciative of all the time of discussion around this topic because it will affect them personally at their residences. It will also affect their businesses. So I think it, I, I apologize to the applicants, but thank you for your and, um, I think this, we just need to take a vote now. I will make a motion to rescind the, um, the, um, the decision from last week to put forward a 25% plan.
Is there a second?
You need, I'll second it if that's the motion you need. Did that make sense?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, or?
Well, I guess, I guess, uh, before you, before you go to a roll call, I, I, I think every decision has risks. Um, and, and this decision certainly has risks. The decision the select board makes, whatever they do, whether they pursue adjudication or not, um, has risks. So, um, this is a hard one. Uh, I'm okay to go for a vote, Meredith. I don't, I don't, the reality of it is, you know, whether, whether we move it forward or pull it back, we're, we're taking a risk.
Okay. So there's, so we have a, um, a motion and a second. Um, so we'll do a, a roll call. Uh, Maggie, sorry.
Can, can, can she, no, just, uh, can you restate your motion?
Um, my, sorry, I didn't plan a formal motion. So my motion is to rescind the, um, the, um, the 25% plan that was put forward last week at last meetings.
And I, we should probably amend it and just say, um, and with the intention of putting, voting on a 10% plan.
So I'll, my motion is to rescind the 25% plan that was voted at the May 8th Planning Board meeting and put forward a, a 10% plan.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And I want to, uh, make another comment. Um, I think, uh, this is a grave mistake. And I, I think it reflects very poorly on this board, um, to decide that it knows better and shouldn't send, uh, to the select board and to the town meeting, uh, something which would allow the town uh, to be compliant with the law as it exists today. We all took an oath to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth and it is a law of the Commonwealth, whether some of us like that or not. And I think, um, uh, I'm really disappointed in the rest of you and I plan to vote no.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. And I appreciate this because this is not an easy decision. Um, all right, let's start with Cheryl.
No.
Um, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. Thank you and apologies. Um, and thank you for everybody who's here and all of your comments because this is not an easy one. Um, okay. So with that, um, I would like to now move to open, uh, the public hearing for two Elliott Street. And we can, uh, invite the applicants in who are at town hall, I understand. And I again apologize for the delay. And, oh, Cheyenne?
Yes.
Is Chey, can you please, um, send, uh, Nick an email letting him know so he can let the select board know and CC me on that?
Yes.
Of, of the vote that we took.
Yep, will do.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, Ned, go ahead. That's
Thank you, um, Ned Corcoran. And I'm sitting here with JD Wild in Tim Zerwinski's old office. Um, we didn't get the memo that, uh, this meeting would be remote. Um, and so here we are at town hall. Um, and we're heartened by the number of comments that came and during Citizen Speak in support of the project that JD and, um, his team have put forward. I think the last time we were here was, uh, April 24th. There were several specific, uh, requests for us. Um, and JD's got a PowerPoint, uh, to share. But I think there were, as I, as my notes indicated, that you wanted to see a roof plan with a parapet, um, a bike rack located on the site, um, elevations with lighting, the heights of lights, lightings and lanterns. Uh, treatment for the corner, uh, at, um, Elliott and Adams. And separately, not a, not directly a part of site plan, but you know, we acknowledge that we'd agree with the, work with the town repl, regarding the replacement of the tree. Um, and so with that, we have a brief PowerPoint that, uh, responds to those, uh, specific, uh, questions and, and, uh, um, and so, uh, Cheyenne or Julia, if you can allow, um, um and so uh Cheyenne or Julia, if you can allow um JD to share screen, um and we can move forward. Thank you.
Channelists, so you feel that.
Thank you. Uh good evening, members of the board. I'm going to share my screen. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh good evening, members of the board. Uh I appreciate all of your time. I know it's getting late in the evening, so I'll jump right into it. Um I've updated the slide presentation to reflect the items that were brought up at the last hearing as uh Ned has indicated. So um, one of the comments that came up was around the discussion regarding the seating that we are proposing at the intersection of Elliott and Adams. What you're looking at is an existing conditions photo. Um in at the prior hearing, uh everyone, including ourselves and and um your board, agreed that it's a really important corner in that um you know, it needs to be thoughtful and that and that seating there is appropriate, but uh the concern specifically was regarding um the planters that we had proposed. Um, one of the comments that came up was that um the concern was that the planters uh might actually feel like they encroach on the sidewalk based on the height of the brick wall and that they're solid. So what I've done today is I've 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 brought back the image that we presented last time just to refresh the board. Um, this was the visual that we provided at the last hearing. Um, and the again, the comment was was that the concern was can we see something else? That it maybe is a um an alternative to the planters. So what I've done is I've I've come up with a concept that keeps the existing railing. So if you look at this existing conditions, you'll see that there's a black iron railing. So we explored a lower, more modest planter that incorporates the railing. And that's what you're seeing right here. So um uh what we've done is we've we've put together a concept, including the railing with a low modest planter with flowers and and kind of seasonal growth that'll flow down. And then uh more vine-like growth that will come up because it is it is important that there is screening there. It is a busy intersection. Um you know, for people to sit outside, we do want to create um a little bit of privacy there and make it feel a little bit intimate and romantic on that corner. Um, you know, uh a a lot of our design intent and a lot of the theme, I've I've referenced you know, the kind of the energy and design ins, but we've been targeting is like a behind the bookstore. I even pushed at one point for a name called Among the Flowers, but Dan wasn't too happy with that. So um, we really want to kind of carry that energy in this design. So that was um that was the intent behind this slide. So um what I've done is I've kind of thrown together a sample of the planting that I would kind of anticipate in those lower planters to execute on this vision. Um, we would try to incorporate some small, maybe dwarf boxwoods, um some will still be some hostas. It's a part sun location, so we don't get a ton of sun on that corner. Uh that that um large perantry does uh have a pretty big presence over on that Adam Street elevation. It does block some of the sun. So a lot of this was based around sunlight, um you know, busy intersection, low maintenance. Um, so what you're looking at is a, you know, kind of a visual representation with those specific plants. And then on the right is an actual photograph of a planter box that I was kind of using as inspiration uh for color, texture. Um, so um that's how we we came up with an alternative for the um the corner. So again, this is what we proposed. Uh, this is the other alternative that we're bringing to the table. Uh, the next issue uh that came up was um uh board members had questions about the um the lanterns that we had proposed. Uh, there was two main questions. One was uh a request that we consider incorporating gas lanterns. Uh, another was uh curiosity on elevations and how they were going to kind of line up on on the exterior of the building. So what we've done is we've uh we've changed from all electric fixtures on the building to four gas lanterns and the remainders will be electric. So the the four gas lanterns, we've located at the two main entrances. And uh from a design standpoint, what we've done is we've actually oversized those fixtures. So the electric fixtures will be the same exact fixture. There will be a slightly smaller version. There were twenty inch total fixture size. The uh the gas fixtures will be a uh twenty six inch total size, so they'll be a little bit more prominent. Um, the exact same fixture, same manufacturer, just a a different heat source, uh excuse me, light source. So um the other thing that came up was when we started to play with that design was that it felt odd to keep them on the exact same plane on the building. Um, because of the difference in size, we really want to kind of separate the two lines. So what you're seeing in this slide is um, you know, the four gas lamps will be at the two entrances evenly spaced around the entrances, mounted at consistent height of um seventy four inches um above the average grade at the uh the handicap entrance there. This is the um intersection we were just talking about. This is the vantage there. So these fixtures will uh still be uh electric fixtures, again, matching the front. Um, this individual slide, I actually overlaid the specific fixture to replace the one we had provided in the rendering originally, so that you could see what the actual specific fixture would look like. Um, this other slide, you can see those are the original ones that we proposed that were electric. They are going to be um the same matching ones. You can see it over here on the left-hand side. I did leave it in this visual. That was a somewhat difficult task to kind of overlay that. So uh and these ones will be at a higher elevation. When we were when we were working on what height to have these ones at, uh we chose the center line of the upper sash of the window. Um, there's a currently an existing um floodlight on the exterior of the building. Excuse me for jumping around. You can see there's a pack floodlight right here, right at the center of the sash. It feels appropriate. We spent a lot of time standing over at extra space storage, standing at one Elliott corner, kind of looking and trying to figure out the height. There they draped down. They have a a nice presence. They provide low level lighting. So we wanted them high enough as to where they're clear from you know, traffic, but not too high as to where they felt like they were floating. So um, that's the design intent and how we arrived at those specific heights. Uh, this was just a a slide I thought was helpful just to show you that it's a nice clean line on the corner where we're proposing uh presenting them. Those white dots are just meant to reflect the uh sconce locations because sometimes it gets lost in these busier visuals. Um, one of the other comments that came up was uh a question about a little more detail on the roof plan and the mechanicals uh that were going to be placed on that roof and how we um were planning to screen it. So what you're looking at in this uh slide is the existing conditions. So this is taken standing in front of the hardware store across the street. I did zoom in just um for conversation purposes. It's really hard to have this conversation without being a closer view. So something I want to point out uh before we jump into the content is you're actually seeing an existing condenser. This is um the condenser that was on the building from Bank of America, supporting the forced hot air system. Uh, we did remove that in anticipation of all these new mechanicals. So this is a Google Earth picture uh from last year. Um, but you can see that that did protrude from the parapet. Um, and quite honestly, I think most of us probably looked past it. It never, I don't think it was overly offensive to the point where it came up in conversation. This copper vent is actually still there. That is also going to be removed. Um, so this is the uh vantage of the existing conditions. This is uh a detailed roof plan that we put together. So there's four four mechanical items that we're putting on the roof for this conversation. One is a makeup air unit uh for the kitchen and for the rest of the building. One is a kitchen exhaust. One is a a gas-fired uh cooling condensing unit, and then another is um a mini split condenser that we are using uh for some of these smaller offices and rooms. We're going to put individual heads in those rooms for both makeup air and um heating and cooling. So uh those are the four units. The way we've uh intentionally aligned them on the roof is to put the lower height units in the front and put the taller height units in the back. Again, when you're standing on the sidewalk and you're looking up at this, because there is a parapet, because um you are looking up at a vantage, it does help hide things. This condenser that you're seeing in this picture was uh almost forty inches tall, sitting on four foot, uh excuse me, four inch wood blocks. So even though that barely shows above the parapet, that is from the roof line that is forty four inches up. So um, we did put these units on the roof. Uh, the uh makeup air unit is thirty nine inches in height in the front and the kitchen exhaust is thirty six inches in height. And then if you look at this, uh we also added uh screening, which we're going to go over, but just so everyone can see it here. Uh, we did present it on the backside of the parapet. The reason being that it also can double as um safety railing for service of the equipment on that flat roof. Uh, this is just another vantage uh to help the board. One of the questions that came up was uh orienting the flat rubber roof when we were talking about it uh for context. So up top is just a a a keyed zoomed in version of the flat rubber roof. The lower is actually the third floor of the building. Uh, if you're looking down, you can see that the flat rubber roof is accessible from the third floor, from that iron fire escape staircase. So again, this is the third floor. Floor plan up here, when you look at it from an aerial, this is the rubber roof we're talking about, and this is the uh second ingress fire escape from up there. So uh that's the roof plan. Um, next I'm going to present to you uh what we're proposing for screening. So um again, this is existing conditions, our uh our design intent and the thoughts we had was what materials and textures do we want to use for the screening? We really had two to work with. One was uh this white shiplap. It's hard to see in this picture, but this is actually a nickel gapped shiplap uh material on the exterior. It's also on the cheek walls of these dormers. So we explored that. Uh, to me, it felt uh too solid. It felt like it was um very fancy. It felt very full. So what we decided to go was was to match this um Chippendale railing on the top. So what we're proposing is to actually um replicate that railing on a lower elevation. Um, and once we started playing around with that, it immediately felt right. It felt uh act- I actually think it feels better than it does without it. Um, it feels very naked and I've I've mentioned in uh uh earlier hearings with this board that that backside has always felt too much brick. If it it feels off. So I actually think it breaks it up nicely. What is also reflected on this slide is the depth of the parapet that came up in the last conversation. So it's sixteen inches from the top of the rubber to the top of the copper uh parapet cap. And then we're proposing a twenty six inch reveal on this railing, so a total of forty two inches. And again, it doubles as our safety rail uh for s- uh service of the mechanicals on the roof deck. Uh, the last and final item that came up was a bike rack, uh question about where it was going to be on site. So this is the style and and um specific bike rack that we're proposing. Uh, it can handle um seven bike spots. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're actually going to put it in front of the uh pad-mounted transformer that we add, need to add to the site. Um, and it's going to serve as our um uh a little bit of screening, but it's also going to replace some of the ballards that we replaced there. So we're actually going to mount this to a concrete pad, so it's doubles as a ballard. So we kind of kill two birds with one stone. It also is a good location in the sense that it it gets the bikes out of the parking lot. It gets them to a place that um you know, you can easily handle seven bikes and uh as well as I mentioned on the prior hearing that over here on Adam Street, we do have uh two additional U-style bike racks just like this. So there's another additional four bike rack spots on Adam Street sidewalk. So it's a total of eleven bike spots provided uh at the site. Uh, and those are the specific items that we had to address from the last hearing. Um, I do have the rest of the deck available to me if there's any further questions, but a a welcome conversation.
Great. So this is very exciting. Um JD and um I'd open it up to the board for comments or questions at this time?
Cheryl has a hand raised.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see you, Cheryl. That's.
Uh JD, can can you? Uh, thanks for the update. Um, can you go back to the um the roof plan and the and the image on the of that little roof? Is the um rubber roof all the onto the right side of that fire escape also?
Yes.
Okay, and the exhaust, is that going to come? Um, now can you go to the image, the photograph? So that exhaust is going to come up above the uh gutter line on the left side there between the uh the gutter and the fire escape. Is that right?
Uh, it'll be below that line. Uh, the this railing, this um top of the fire escape railing, this is a thirty six inch railing. And if you see, this is um sitting on top of the parapet. It's got about a six inch um iron deck that it sits on. So I would approximate this about forty two inches to get you up to about the gutter line. The um, the hood exhaust is thirty six inches tall. So with a sixteen inch parapet, approximately twenty inches will have be revealed.
So describe how that hood works. Is it coming up and and having a hood turn towards the outside parapet? Is it?
Yeah, it's actually um, it it is that um, it's this style. So it's a s- uh central fan style hood. So it's not a mushroom, a typical mushroom head.
Okay, so um the way it's it'll be blowing out towards the parking lot, not towards the fire escape, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
And the unit that's fifty six inches high, which I think is the makeup air unit, that will rise above uh the gutter line. Is that right?
Um, we don't intend any of it to rise above the gutter line. Um, the, excuse me, so the g- the condenser uh is fifty six.
The condenser, yeah.
Yep. The makeup air unit is actually long and rectangular, lays down.
Okay. And um, thank you. And then um can you scroll through the slide again? I keep going. Keep going. Right there, the bike ra- um rack, there's a from there, you can get up to the entrance on Elliott Street, correct? On the left side of the building?
Uh, that is correct, Cheryl. So this is a a handicap ramp. If I I assume you can see my cursor. This is a ramp right here that takes you all the way out to Elliott Street.
Okay, and uh the striped is for the uh for the handicap spot next to it? Is that right?
Correct. This is a handicap spot right here. Yep.
So the bicycles, when they're in that rack, wouldn't be protruding into that handicap um maneuvering zone?
No, would not. There might be a little bit of overhang of the rear tire here. But there's a good four feet or so right here but in front of the pad without the transformer. So realistically, a majority of the bike is going to remain on that what's currently a mulch bed um in front of it.
And um my experience with the utility companies, they need direct access to the front of their transformer. Are they going to be getting that then from where the dumpster enclosure is, or you would have to move the bike rack, or how would that work?
Nope. So the the transformer, this is uh what you're seeing right here is actually the pad. When the transformer comes, it sits on the rear. It's got two double doors in the front. They require us to put ballards in the front uh for safety with cars. So their access is actually behind the ballards. We're proposing to put the bike rack in line with the ballards. So it shouldn't encroach on their transformer.
Uh Sean has a hand.
It will be removable as well, Cheryl. So if there ever was some sort of, just like the ballards, um you know, they obviously if it's an emergency, they need the ability to, but.
Okay, um, those are my questions. Thanks JD.
Yep.
Wait, Sean, um, go ahead.
Yeah, hi JD. Um, I think I think like everybody else, I think it probably it's probable that everybody feels like it looks great. Can you go back to the mechanical roof area for a moment? And that um, so those two units, the makeup air unit and the um the condensing unit, those dimensions of height thirty nine and fifty six, is that inclusive of the curb? Or will the curb be additional to that height?
Yeah, so the curb will likely be additional to that height. This is the model spec dimensions. Um, this sits on a plenum. My my estimate is that's probably four to six inches. Uh, it's not a huge plenum, the makeup air unit. Um, the gas-fired condenser doesn't, I mean, it sits on the pad. It's a rubber roof. There's certainly solutions. You could do um like anti-vibratory pads if we need to go with something thinner, but what I'm reflecting is just the dimensions of the unit itself.
Okay, so probably going to be a little bit higher. At least the makeup air unit will probably be higher. I mean, mo- mo- most curbs in my experience is probably eight, ten, twelve inches. Um, and and I guess one other question on that. I I do think I I like I like the idea that you're utilizing a parapet that replicates what's at the high roof. It might be okay for that to be a little higher, you know, to screen a little bit more. Can you go back to that image of uh?
Yes.
Yeah, is that is that dimension, the twenty six? Is that the same dimension as the high roof?
No, the high roof is a thirty six inch high rail. Uh, I was proposing forty two. If this was built today, I think um, there actually, there's no mechanicals up there, so I don't.
Right.
That it's probably okay for today's standard, but because of the mechanical access in the fall, I think forty two is probably required here.
Were you trying to stay under the gutter line? Is that why you had the the height of twenty six on top of the?
Uh, no, I just I was uh pre- presenting it as a forty two inch high rail. Um, I could certainly make it taller. I was just doing the uh minimum for safety. Um, you know, I wasn't sure if this board was going to be concerned with too much height, so I thought that was the minimum that I needed for a safety rail.
Okay. Yeah, I I'm just I'm just uh I guess throwing it out there that if you find that those units, you know, are, you know, more visible than you'd like above that, maybe making that um higher than twenty six inches might might be helpful.
Yes, sir.
It's not, it's not a, it's not a, I mean, this is the back of the building. I I I'm not too. too hung up over this, but if you're making an effort to screen it and, and six inches more in terms of that type of a of a a, whatever we want to call it, it might help it hide the top of the units. So it's I'm not, I'm not real hung up over JD. I'm just offering it.
I appreciate that. Yeah. As, you know, the property owner and someone myself who's investing significant funds in this project, that my, my goal is to make sure that we're thinking through these things and executing on them well, because it, it serves me in many fronts, not only in front of this board, in front of the town, but also as a proprietor myself. So.
Yeah. Well, I think architecturally, using a system here, same as top is going to look good. You'll keep some, you know, some consistency and aesthetic. And anyhow, I'll just leave it, I'll leave it up to you for, for the consideration. If you want to make it a little bit, you know, taller.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. I can't see hands up. So go ahead.
So just to follow up with Sean said, even though it is the back of the building, a lot of residents from the town will actually see it coming down Adam Street. So I think more people will actually see it than maybe looking up the front of the building. So I think that is a good suggestion, making it a little bit taller if you can, just to hide it a little bit more, might be helpful. The other thing I'm concerned about is you mentioned that it's a flowering pear on the street. And I know it's a town, it's the town's responsibility to care for the street trees. But pear trees are now not being favored as a street tree and actually are considered being invasive. So if for some reason the pear tree does decline and needs to be removed, would you be willing to do a different type of tree instead of letting the town do it? Because the town seems to put in undersized trees in their sidewalks.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm obviously heavily invested down in the village as a whole. I think our interests are all aligned in the sense that, you know, what it could be and what it is are two different things. So I'm open to that conversation. I, anything that's going to improve the village as a whole, I'd, I'd love to be a part of that conversation if I can support it and help it. It's certainly on the table on my end.
So I love the idea of keeping the, the fence. I think that looks really pretty and classic. Boxwood is a classic plant choice. And I like the idea of a smaller planter. I, I like the oversized lights. I feel like a lot of times people undersize their exterior lights. And I think all of your choices seem to be very thoughtful. And I just want to say thanks for, for all your efforts. And I know we haven't talked about the right side yet, but I like if we, if we're going to keep the railing as a, you know, the black wrought iron railing, then I think maybe keeping the other hardscape elements to a minimum. Cause I think, if I recall, you have a brick wall with maybe a granite cap. And then if you go down the, the walkway to access the ice cream window, I think there could be a concrete wall. There's just like grading changes. So it would be nice to kind of minimize all the hardscape elements and, you know, keep it to the wrought, wrought iron brick and, you know, granite.
Sure. I, I would agree with you. I think that's fair.
And I love the name, if you're going to stick with two pence, even though I love flowers.
That, that's entirely Dan's call. So I, I think we're sticking with two pence.
Okay. And Jim, did you have any?
Yeah. So I'm walking because my computer is about to die, but I love it. I gotta say JD, I love the fixtures. I think those gas fixtures are gorgeous. And the way you match the electrical fixtures, you know, the electric, electrified ones are fantastic. I agree with Maggie. I love the railing. I think it's a great idea to keep that. You know, Boston ivy grows great. I'm sure there's a lot of ivy. You're gonna, you're gonna make that look fantastic. And yeah, I just like what I see. And I gotta, I gotta reiterate what the board says. Thank you very much for doing this. I mean, that area is screaming for food and I'm glad you're doing it. I understand you're investing in a lot. And I'm, I'm ready to vote when it pleases the board.
Thank you.
And so I just want to, just a couple of items. One, I really do like, it's actually a beautiful iron fence that's there. So I'm, I love the idea of preserving that. And yeah, that it just is, it, it just fits with that corner. It's open. It's welcoming, inviting. I love it. Just in this photo, you also have the use of lattice with some climbing things that I think could be great in that patio area as well. But definitely, and if you can keep on, can we go to the pergola? The side with the, the views of the different, the pergolas?
Oh, you want to? From the last presentation?
I know from, from this one, you have some, just maybe it's from the last one. Yeah. You had some photos.
This one?
Yes, yes, exactly. So maybe, and there's one shot where it shows a little bit to the right, the stone, the wall. And where you would mount this.
Yeah, it's from the sorry.
Yep.
We did it.
Right there. Actually do two. There's two different versions.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I, I, so I think keeping it simple, so it's not detracting from the building. And I think a couple of those slides were examples of that. Really keeping it sort of minimalistic. Not to detract or be too busy from the, to detract from the building. But the question is, and I know this is how you would have this installed. Is it possible? Cause I think I've seen it where you actually would have the footings on the right hand side, on the high street side to mount within the, within the stone wall area so that you could maintain that gate. I'm thinking of consistency on, you know, you've got the beautiful iron railing off to the left and you've got it stair stepped going up high street. If there was any way to mount it inside into the brick or somehow, I don't know how you would, how you would do that from an engineer and architect's standpoint. But if you could preserve that, yeah. If you could preserve that and have that, you would obviously take off that inside gate, but have it mounted within the high street wall, the high street gates.
Sure. That, that's fair. I think that's achievable. Yeah. The interior one that you're looking here is actually a retro, but it's a aluminum kind of fake gate.
Right.
I think we could, we could certainly find a way to preserve this, especially if we're going to keep it on the Elliott section as well.
I think that would look great. It's actually a really, really pretty iron gate. It needs some TLC, but it's beautiful iron. So that would be, that would be a preference. I love that what you've done with the lighting. I really appreciate that. And, you know, the tree selection, again, I had mentioned a Princeton elm, but you know, I, I would leave that up to you. I just know Princeton elms are doing really well down in that area. And you had mentioned doing a, a tree guard around that. And I can send you some examples. They, there's a company that did Assembly Square, tree guards all throughout Assembly Square, if you're over, ever over there. And I can send you the, the company name and the link for that. And they have various options. But I'm sure you have other sources too.
Sure. Yeah. I'm, I'm open to the conversation. So.
Yep. And so, and so my, just my last question is because you do have in that little courtyard or that gathering area outside, you do have this, the concrete retaining wall? How do you treat that?
You talking about the existing one right here on this side?
So that, that comes out, correct? I think there's right on the back of that wall, like where.
This is all, yeah, it's all going to stay. So there's an existing concrete retaining wall here on the backside. And then there's one right here on the handicap ramp side. We're going to reuse those walls.
You're going to wet those walls?
We're going to reuse those walls. They're existing. We're going to maintain them.
Okay. I didn't know if there's anything you could put like a lattice or anything on them. I, I haven't looked at them closely, but I'm sure you'll.
They're, full disclosure, they're not the prettiest right now. Our intention is to put planters on top, grow stuff around. You know, we're trying to minimize the, the, the hardscape package, start bringing it. When we, when we revisited this project after our initial preliminary presentation to this board, we talked about how do we simplify the execution? How do we get open? The number one thing we keep hearing from people in town is how excited they are and when are we going to open? So we wanted to simplify the project and kind of strip it down to the bare essentials. So we thought that minimizing the amount of new masonry and walls and hardscape was a pretty big impact on the budget and schedule. So that's why we landed.
Okay. And just on that takeout window, it looks like, do you have to take out, do a cutout of that window? Or can you reuse the current opening?
Yeah. So there's an existing window right here. We're going to widen it to the left. So we're going to use this existing opening and then we're going to just widen it to the left.
Okay. Can you match the trim detail to the current window?
The wood trim?
The wood trim. Yes.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah. And we'll, we'll carry this soldier detail of the brick on the header line here as well. We'll make it look like, you know, we weren't even there.
Right. Perfect. Yeah. So I think this looks very, very good.
So along the lines, can I jump in here on the, that next slide over? Well, actually even on that one, in terms of the the header for the window, it was one of the reasons that I had suggested submitting building elevations because I think what we're going to end up needing to do is have a decision which describes some of these details, or at least you're going to have to have some callouts on the drawings. Just so that it's documented, you know, like what you've, you know, JD, believe what you're going to do, what you say you're going to do, but we still have to have the documentation. So I think certainly something like that can be called out on, in this set of images or in the language of the decision. But it's those, those details that are going to, you know, be really important, as you know. And we just want to make sure that they get in the, in the documentation. So on the next, can you go to the next one? So it looks to me like, I asked, I think the last time whether this pergola was going to attach to the building or detach. This looks detached, which I think is actually a better approach. I don't know if you've given more thought to that JD, in terms of what, how you're thinking of doing it?
I would prefer to attach it. What we had anticipated doing was ledgering it to right here below this window course here. We'd explored early on when we were doing these renderings detached. I really liked the idea of coming up that handicap ramp and having the pergola go over it. You know, one alternative to attaching it to the building would be a post down right on the inside of the building. It does require more footings and more, you know, obviously earthwork, but I, I personally really liked the idea of the pergola spanning over the handicap ramp, having the bistro lights and all the greenery kind of flow over it. So it feels more like a, like a really grand entrance from the parking lot. It also is a really nice transition down to the parking lot from the Elliott, Elliott Street side.
One thing you could consider is cantilevering over the walkway. And then having a gutter, you know, on the, the side closest to the building. In which case you yeah. So instead of a post, like you have a post there coming down, I think to the right side of the ramp, right? In this image. Yeah. So if the, if the pergola extended, it's pretty high up to provide real weather protection, I think for that.
This lowered, two things. So one is the lowered roof is waterproof. So it does, when it closes, it is waterproof. It is an aluminum frame, not a steel frame. So I would have concerns with cantilevering and snow load. So that was one of the design considerations we had. It's going to provide more protection in the elements. And it does, it's actually one of the nice features about the product we're using. It does have an integrated gutter system into the frame as well. So there is no exterior gutter. It is actually integrated into the, the tube frame.
Okay. Well, so you've selected a particular product. Do you think that, that this is representing? Or you still that?
This, these pictures, correct. Yeah. These are of the design inspo. We have two manufacturers we're currently working on custom solutions with. Both have a very similar product. It's pretty competitive space. Actually, there's a handful of people that provide almost identical products, just depending on sourcing, different levels of customization.
Okay. So like that image on the right where the heaters are like against the brick. You know, one of the things I think it's typical with historic properties is to tread lightly with how much you attach to the or change the existing, like if it was like a, a National Park Service, you know, Secretary of the Interior Standards of Historic Preservation, they would want you to do things that could be removed without damaging the existing building. So I guess what I would suggest is just as you think about those heating elements, as you think about that connection to the building, to to, to see if you can do as much as possible to tread lightly on, on that brick wall.
Sure.
JD, I would just, I'm looking at the top left, the pergola on the top left. And it almost has a little bit more of an architectural detail. Almost it looks like a, you know, what would, it's obviously aluminum or steel, but has almost like, it looks like a molding trim on it. Which has a little bit more of a classic look, which I think would, if you could find something that looked like that, that has a little bit more of a less just flat, you know, super modern, something a little bit more classic, I think would be great too. But I think it's.
So I, I, I think I would be comfortable asking Ned if he'd like to draft a decision. But it also like that, these slides to have further notations that correspond to that draft decision, since we, we don't have like architectural elevations for this. And then we could review those at our, at our next meeting. And hopefully wrap it up at that time.
I would agree if the board would agree to that. I, I don't know if our next meeting is next Thursday. I don't know if that's too soon, Ned, for you to draft something?
I can certainly make every effort to get it there in time. I have a simple A and R presentation.
Also, yeah.
Thursday, we'd love to wrap this up next week if possible. So I will endeavor to have a, a decision, a draft of a decision out for review by, you know, the end of the week. And that gives us, gives you opportunity for additional comment. And hopefully we could, you know, share a screen with a draft, the final draft and make whatever final modifications are necessary right in front of us.
Does the rest of the board agree to that?
That sounds great. I like that.
It's fine with me too.
The only other question I have is did Cheyenne go through a checklist? You know, sometimes she provides a checklist that everything's been submitted properly.
I think she did.
I think she did also, but I can confirm that with her. She's not on any, she's on vacation. Actually, she might not be back, Julia, right? She, next Thursday, she won't be here.
Um, yeah, she won't be back until after Memorial Day.
Okay. So we, you know what? I'll check in with Nick on that because I think he's been working with Cheyenne. So I'll check in on that.
But she, well, I know for a fact that she asked us for a couple of additional components at the time that we filed. They were based on requirements of the checklist.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Meredith, one, one question. I'm going to lower my hand. I've had my hand there, but uh.
Oh, sorry. That's.
No, no, no worries. JD, have you made any further progress with your building permit application?
I did receive a round of comments in between the prior hearing and now. So that is good news that things are moving on that side. So I'm hoping it's still not too late to kind of move this forward in parallel. So I'm hoping to return responsive to those comments this week. And then my hope would be by the time this decision gets signed and appeals period elapses and the building permits being issued about the same time. That would be my hope.
Great. Thanks for that info.
All right. And I'm texting Cheyenne because she's, she might still be available. All right, and I'm texting Cheyenne because she's, um, she might still be available just to ask about that checklist. So.
Well, Meredith, um, I just one more, one more, I, I don't know, it's, it's probably a statement, not a question, but, um, back to Cheryl's, um, uh, suggestion about staying away from the brick. It, I think it, it might, it looks to me like it's a separate structure that, um, you know, the canopy is, uh, whatever you want to call that, looks like your designer has kept it separate from the brick. But Cheryl's point is probably, you know, there might be some connection at the roof elevation to the brick, just to keep, you know, keep that roof weather tight, but it does look like a separate structure. That looks like the heaters are hanging from it, not, not attached to the building.
It can be either. So you can either attach to the building or you can, uh, instead of, you know, again, ledgering right here, you can post down as well, um, up a building. You know, I mean, the, the, the only real difference, I think, from my end is that I obviously have to post down the footings. Right now I have mulch, so I'd have to dig and excavate footings. Um, I'd want to try to create coverage for this takeout area here, so that does introduce a post, um, somewhere in this location, um, that I'd have to figure out. But if that, again, if that was something that the board felt strongly about, it, I, I've solved harder problems, so I could certainly.
I think that would be great, JD. Um, and what might be nice also, if you're concerned about coverage for that, um, takeout, is an awning. Maybe you could do something separate, so you wouldn't have to carry it over. I don't know. But I think doing a separate post would be, would be wonderful to not attach to the building.
So JD, if you do that, would the awning be watertight to the building? If you post down as opposed to ledger it? Or would there be a little crack where water's going to get in and run down that wall?
Yeah, um, it's a great question. I, it, it's certainly if it's ledgered to the building, it's a lot easier to flash it. We probably would have to find a way to incorporate the flashing, um, into the brick course. I don't know. I'd have to think that through, but, I mean, again, I, I could solve it. Um, if we did ledger to it, it would, it would, it would make it easier. We could do a gasket or silicone on the top line there, so nothing gets behind the ledger. So.
And then wouldn't that be more comfortable for your customers if they're sitting? Are there going to be tables against there or just the handicap?
Just the handicap ramp in the service window. All the tables are out here.
All right, so it's not that much of an issue, yeah?
It's, it's not.
All right.
And Cheyenne just got back to me that, um, everything, um, when they came, was complete and Julia should have the scan in the server, she believes. So. But so she had everything as complete to Maggie's question. Okay. All right. So does that sound like a plan that we will um, wait to see? And Ned, if you get that done, um, in advance of our meeting, you could send it over to Julia and she could distribute it.
I'll send it as soon as I can. I would ask the board to continue to next Thursday evening, so that this is obviously a, a date that's on the, on your calendar.
Yes.
Otherwise you'd have to repost.
Yep, yep.
If for some reason it's not ready, you know, we can.
We can continue it.
We do a continuance.
Right.
For following.
Great. So I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for two Elliott Street to, um, seven oh five on, uh, May twenty second.
They have to do it at, um, seven ten or later because the, um, the, the other public hearing is at seven oh five.
Okay, sorry, seven ten.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for two Elliott Street to seven ten on May twenty second.
Second.
All right, roll call. All in favor, Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie? You're muted.
Didn't hear you, Maggie.
Yeah.
I think you're muted.
You're still muted, but I.
I'm not.
There, there you are. Okay.
Now you're muted.
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, we'll see you, um, next Thursday then.
Right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so now, um, moving on to the only other agenda item that we had was um, discussion of the MBTA zoning, um, we have, um, we can either pull up, we can either pull up the districts, the map, um, and what we have for the ten percent plan, or we can start with the language that, um, the draft language that Cheyenne has sent to the board. Do we want to just, why don't we, for the public who's just watching, um, Julia, do you have the slide deck I sent over?
Do you want the, you want the, um, thing that was sent by Nick today?
The one that I sent to you for the ten percent? And then we'll look, and then we'll look at the language, but just to review what the maps look like and what, what the districts are? Share that and we can walk through. So while she's getting that, this was the plan that we had voted to send to HLC for their review. And you can scroll down, Julia. Okay, so you can go back up. This was just looking at, uh, the districts within the half mile of the commuter station is on the next slide. Right here. This was just reviewing the seventy-four acres within the half mile. Thirty-seven and a half acres of developable station land. You can go to the next one. So this is the plan that we had voted again to send with all of the, um, for the adjacent community plan. We have still, we have our, um, many of the same districts in this plan. The Granite Avenue North, the Paper Mill Site, the Blue Hill Ave Station, the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, Elliott Street Corridor, and the Seven-Eleven Randolph. Go to the next one. This was the Blue Hill Station area. Maped. All right, next. Yep, and then Blue Hills Parkway Corridor. And these are within the half mile. And then this is our, um, this is how we came out with our, our units, our numbers that we all had agreed to on this. So forty-eight, and that's on our website. And then, yeah, so, and this is all on our website, just so folks can, can take a look. Our minimum open space, the height of the buildings, the number of parking spaces, lot size, units per acre, et cetera. Okay, and you can go to the next one. And actually, we added, and then, yeah, so this was the also, and this is not in, um, this should be above with the other districts. We'll have to, um, realign these for a presentation. But this is the Granite Avenue North District. Eight point nine acres, yep, Paper Mill Site, three point five acres, Elliott Street Corridor, Seven-Eleven Randolph Ave. I think that was the last one. And we'll have to align these, we'll have to, make these maps consistent, and we'll have to, um, provide street, the street addresses, so folks know. But this is at least a general, the general, uh, location and map area, which we've been discussing in both the ten and the twenty-five percent plans.
And we would list out every parcel? That would be.
Yes, they, um, Util has that. They're, they, they have that ability to do that quite easily. So that would be available, um, as well.
So that would be on our website, because it would be helpful for people to know if it's, if their property is affected or if their neighbor is affected.
I agree, yep. And we would want that to be part of the presentation for town meeting.
Meredith, this, um, deck is dated May second. Um, there was one sent by Nick today. You want to take a look at that one?
Oh, sure, that's, I didn't see that. I just saw the, um, draft zoning language, but maybe that's, he's added, incorporated this.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe Nick needs to be aware that we like to get our materials the Friday before our meeting.
Pretty hard to do when the meeting was the Thursday before the Friday you were speaking of.
Now that's rapid transit. I guess I'm, I'm thinking of, uh, Rapid Transit stuff that he sent. Um, but there is this.
Yeah, I didn't see the districts. Because we'd sort of, sort of finished with that and then moved to the twenty-five percent work.
Right, okay.
May eighth, I feel like the May eighth, um, slide deck that Util did, they combined both the adjacent and the, um, Rapid Transit did the, uh, in, into one.
Yeah, which is the same. These were pulled from that.
Okay.
Previous slides.
We're up to date.
So I think what we want to do is make sure, I, I know, um, there were some updates to the zoning language. Julia, can you pull that up?
Sure.
And we'll walk through that. And that was dated, uh, May sixth. But there might be a more recent update. Um, I'm working from the draft from May sixth. And I think Cheryl, you had some edits. Was, was it both to this or was it just to the Rapid Transit?
I did not focus on this. I focused on the Rapid Transit.
Okay. Okay, so. Now this. Did anyone have any, oh. Did anyone have anything on this first page?
So on the May sixth, you know, I just need to print it out.
Yeah.
So it's the May sixth one.
Yep. And Nick had a few comments. Um, you'll see, I believe these were Nick's comments in red. Or Julia, is that correct?
Um.
Like under purpose, rev- review purpose clause.
Yeah, this is what he provided today, so, um, this is all he has to do. I'm not seeing any red, though.
Mm-hmm. Oh, this is on, I just have things highlighted, like under.
Yeah, they're things that are highlighted, but.
Right, yeah. I had some comments that, um.
Meredith, there's another email from Nick. It was three twenty-one today, and I, um, Julia, you might, um, and he had his changes in red on it?
That's what I, yeah.
And that, that's not reflected on this?
Yeah, this was.
That's because the three twenty-one one has the Rapid Transit with edits that I suggested. I did not supply edits to this one.
Okay, so that's, okay, he had sent that, oh, okay.
So on May sixth, um, we were emailed one with a couple of, um, and these are just some language, um, some slight language changes, which, um, I think we can, we can look at later. I think what's most important is we make sure that the, the question is, that Nick really had for us is we want to make sure that the numbers are all correct, um, the inputs. But as the planning board, do we want to, now that we have approved the site plan approval, do we want to make it subject to that site plan approval? Um, that, that, and instead of having the design standards? Maybe when we get down to that, um, we can talk about it. And I can, you know what, why don't I read off just what I have in the red comments? So under purpose, uh, Nick has highlighted, review the purpose clause. And I'm not sure if he just wanted, if he wanted to change that or if he had thoughts on that, so. He had reviewed that purpose clause on there. Then on page, it was fine, everything was fine, page two and three. These were all the definitions that were essentially, um, lifted. The only one, if you scroll down to page four, Julia? Can you go down?
Sorry, the pages aren't numbered.
Oh, okay. Um, so if you can go down, it's the very last, when you go down to the definitions, the very last definition is subway station?
Yeah, so this, we didn't even, May sixth, it's the May sixth.
Yeah.
In the email.
Is that what you're using, Julia?
I'm using the May sixth now, yeah, but if you can see, like, this came in today. And I would think we'd want to use the one that came in today.
It might, we can, we can do that. And let me just see if he made the changes. So if you scroll down to the last definition.
Okay, I'm gonna get rid of that.
So it's number twenty-eight? Oh, yeah, um, oh, yeah. So, yeah, so you can see this is where, this is the highlight. It just doesn't look red on here, but under subway station, um, this, this is not the same, um, this is from the statute, but it's not what the regulations say. So I think we'll have to probably look at changing that language. Um, but we can ask Nick about that, or.
Well, you don't think it should be consistent with the statute?
Well, that's what's in there. Yeah, this was just a comment that he had, but, um, I think we should, scroll down further. He didn't, there was nothing for, uh, the next page. Then when it comes to the, yeah, community spaces, yeah, right here, Julia, if you wanted to stop up at that. So.
District, spell up a little more.
Yep, so this. This was for the, um, the Granite Ave Sub District.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So lot, when we go down, um, to lot size, a lot of this is templated from the twenty twenty-three. So lot size.
Yeah, there is none.
There's none. Uh, the number of stories is six. The minimum, um, hi, the maximum. The minimum, the maximum height, 75 feet. And then height, please, four and a half. Yep, and then, okay, then standard, the minimum parking, none.
Did we change the minimum open space to 30% or was that only in the Rapid Transit?
That was 30%.
Yeah.
That, we, we had had that, which was interesting, I, when I was looking through it, that, because we changed it in the Rapid Transit plan, but it was, we originally had it as 30%.
Okay, so in the May 6th edition, it's 40%, so.
Wait, you know what, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this. And it said, it had, it had, it had been 40%. So he has made some, he has made some adjustments to this. Because we had previously 40% and we had maximum units per acre at 45.
Did we get a copy of this? Because this one is dated 5/13.
Yeah, this, this is what he sent me today. On the left, this, this one over here is from 5/6. So it does say 40% there and it says 30% here.
So on, did he provide a new calculations chart, Julia, for this?
Um, I don't know. He just sent me, this is an attachment and then, you know. You know, this should be highlighted if he changes, I would think.
You know what? But I, but what's interesting is, you know what, he might have done this correctly in making these changes because if we go back and we pull, can you pull up two? Can you pull up what the chart was that we had in that, in that little slide presentation?
Um.
Can we do a side by side? Is that possible?
The one from last week?
The one that you ju, we just started with tonight? This, where it has.
Your, your slide.
Yes. Because that's what HLC, I mean, that's what UTL had decided. And it did say 30% there, so maybe this was. He was correct in changing this.
Okay. So that's a, so we're like, just so I'm on clear.
Yeah.
We're looking at adjacent community version two. And that's what he emailed us today. At like 12. At 12/27, he emailed us. Three different, or two different article, articles.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we're looking at.
Correct, but I, but what we need to make sure is the inputs that he's added correlate with the UTL's calculations. So.
And the correct one.
Yeah.
And it's 24.
Pull it up, because I can read through this. So. My phone doesn't die. So I'm gonna just, I'm gonna share this with the board right now because we can then look at. Or I'll send it, actually, Julia, to you, and I don't know if you can share it now. No, I'll just share this because it's.
You emailing it to me?
I'm gonna email it to, it's what I sent to you, which is just the slide presentation. So everybody will see the table. Because I, we, what we want to do is to make sure that the table is consistent with what is in in the zoning language. Because those are our calculation numbers, so I'm gonna send it to everybody right now, so everyone can pull it up.
Is this what you wanted?
I just. It's, it's the entire chart for all the districts, so we can do a side by side, just comparison to make sure what we have. And everybody hopefully just got that.
Not yet.
Okay. So it's right before the, thank you.
Got it now.
You got it? So we can open this up. So when we look at Granite Ave North, that's what we're, the the Granite Ave is what we're looking at right now. There is 30% in there and it is six stories, so that's correct. We just want to make sure. And it's 48. So the changes that Nick made in here are the correct changes to what UTL provided us. That's what I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so 38, 48, this is all correct. Setback frontage. Front yard setback, 30. Side setback, 10, 20. 20 and 1.1. Yep. Okay. Okay, great. So, so moving down, Julia. Those changes were all made. Paper Mill Subdistrict.
Which page are you looking at?
So now it's, now going to the Paper Mill. He only had one comment under eight. So it's E8. And he may have made these changes. Right there, yeah. So the site where it says exceptions, renewable energies installations. The site plan review authority may waive the height and setbacks. And I think he wanted just to change that language to say. Oh, he made that change because it had said a special permit granting authority. So he's made that, he's made that change already. And then the following. That's all good here. Going down to B, going to the Blue Hill Ave Subdistrict here. He under number two, Mattapan Square and the Blue Hill Ave commuter rail station. Yep, so he's up, he updated that. Previously, it just said across from Mattapan Square. So, and he wrote in the, and the Blue Hill Ave commuter rail station. So, yep, so he's, he's made these edits for us already. Okay. So continuing down. This is the minimum, the under the table dimensions here again. This was the, the minimum lot size, 5,000 square feet. The lot area per additional unit, 1,000, height, six stories. Maximum height and feet, 75, minimum open space, 40%. Maximum units per acre, 45. None. Front yard setback, 15, 5, 20, going down, 30, 1.1. So. That was all completed. He didn't have any other comments going down further. Applicability. Can you go to Blue Hills Parkway Corridor Subdistrict? Yep, number two. So an applicant, he had highlighted. An applicant may develop multifamily housing on certain parcels within. Okay. We had said in the original draft, it had said an applicant may develop multifamily housing on certain parcels within a half mile of the Mattapan Station along with along or adjacent to Blue Hills Parkway in accordance with the provisions of the subsection. So in close, so he changed it to say in close proximity.
Why? Because somewhere outside the half mile?
Yeah, probably. We can ask him, ask about that. Yeah, so. I would assume that that is why. So that, he just highlighted that previously, but yeah, in close proximity. Okay. Right, standard, all right, looks like under five units per acre. He has that in blue there to be added. And that's all consistent with, with what we had previously. Okay. And then on Elliott Street, under number three. Let's see. He had changed this to 7,000, the uses permitted as of right. He the parcels, 7,000 square feet or more. And he made that change. So that's been corrected in here. Going down to the, to the, on the chart, Julia, yeah, if you can stop right there. He had changed it to be lots, 7,000 to 9,999 square feet with point 50. And then 10,000 to 14,999 square feet. And that's point four. And then lots, 15,000 square feet or more. Point 2.7. So that, those are correct. Those changes were made. Okay. Keep going down. So 711 Randolph Avenue. Yep, this all looked good. He, there was not anything in here except for under maximum open space. He added the words units per acre. So that is. That is correct.
So just as a side note, on 711 Randolph Ave. Does it, does it have existing 40% open space of? Was that part of their 40B application, do you know? And maybe you don't know, but.
I don't, I don't know.
Because.
That was, if that was consistent with what the 40B zoning was.
Yeah, and I don't know if we need to clarify what open spaces. So on this particular 40B, and I did talk to Nick about it. This developer cleared every last tree up to the property line. So there's nothing. There's nothing. They actually took down trees on the neighboring yard because I saw it. And I showed Nick pictures of it. So I don't know, and I know it's a 40B and I know that they have different requirements and they don't have to follow basic principles, but can we put in like open space, maybe it just needs a clarifier. Open space just means like soil.
It's in the definitions, Maggie, is open space, and I'll try to.
Yeah, okay.
Pull it up because it does address open space. Under number 20, and I'll just read this. For the purposes of subdistricts, subsection, of this subsection, open space shall mean a portion of a lot or of adjacent lots in common ownership exclusive of any building or buildings and/or their associated driveways and parking areas and shall include parks, lawn, gardens, landscaped areas, community gardens, terraces, patios, areas left in their natural, areas left in their natural condition, athletic fields, open air, open air athletic courts, playgrounds, open air swimming pools, or any open vegetated areas, driveways and parking areas permanent or temporary shall not, shall not be considered open space. So that's the definition.
Okay, so there's no there's no set, like setbacks, do not disturb area of like five or 10 feet or anything.
No, we didn't have that and. Yep. And it wouldn't affect this anyway, Maggie. I mean, it wouldn't affect the 40B because this is overlay zoning, so.
Thinking.
They already have their permit, so. Yep, but for other projects, okay, so. All right, so we are going down, exceptions. Yep, so this was all all consistent with what we had up until the point where we get to be the general development standards. If you scroll down, yeah. Yep, right here. So here we have, this was prior to our. Oh wait, okay, so he's put this in, let me see. Projects proposed in accordance shall be subject to section 275 site plan approval. All right. So he did, he did. Yep, all right. So he did take this because basically what had been in here with the design standards, if you remember in the, in the May 6th. It listed basically all the design standards which are currently now implemented and incorporated into the site plan approval. So rather than duplicating and having all of these standards that were previously listed, this just simplifies the article. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That we don't need to have both. Yeah.
I mean, the only benefit of including it in is it just saves applicants from having to reference another part of our bylaw. That's the only bit of having it in, but but again, I printed out the May 6th and that's like 35 pages where this is, you know, 10 or 12 pages.
Right, it just makes it a cleaner article.
I'd like to keep.
And so design guidelines, the site plan review authority may adopt and amend by simple majority vote, and this was all in what had been in previously. And then the affordability requirements. Go down to that. And Nick thinks it's reasonable for us to put in the 15% as we had discussed previously. He does not think that there will be a an issue with that with HLC, so he felt that we should, we should put that in and and send this, you know, for, for review. But this is consistent with what other towns are being approved for.
And, and he also feels we can bring the unit count to eight?
To eight or more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he had.
Rather than 10.
That's what he had suggested, which is consistent with what other towns like Newton are doing. And, and he felt, and if you remember our, when we were working with a consultant on our economic feasibility plan. It was, it they were thinking that we would be fine with this too.
Now, it doesn't have any reference to making any type of contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust, right? If it's, if it's a development less than eight. Because.
Yeah, this does not address that.
Okay, and we, so that's what I had sort of suggested we, we do is you know, we should make as much of a contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust or housing authority, and maybe it could be based on a percentage of the sale price or a percentage of the rental if they don't sell. Just so we are generating some additional funds that we could help the Affordable Housing Trust in developing additional units. So now, we, we.
Cheryl, what have you seen other town, other communities? How, how are they calculating that? Typically?
Or do you? I, I don't know what others have done on the MBTA communities on whether. HLC will allow a contribution. I've heard that, um, they haven't been amenable to that, but I'm not certain if, if they agree to it for any community. Um, I understand that this at eight is, um, is, as far as they were willing to go. But, like I said, I don't know for sure if somebody else has done it or not.
Alright, so that's a question that, um, I can follow up with Nick on and ask them, ask him, that seems like something we should, we should ask about, if we can ask HLC if, if that's something that would be allowable.
Because many of our sites are actually going to only possibly generate three units. So I feel like we're missing out on an opportunity. And it doesn't have to be, um, we don't have to gouge them, because I fully understand that it's either a resident, um, taking advantage of them opportunity that their house falls within this district, or it's going to be a smaller developer. A local developer, hopefully. So I don't want to gouge them, but, um, it might be. That's why I was thinking a percentage of the sales price, because if it's a down market, then they're not being penalized. And if it's an up market, then perhaps they contribute a little bit more.
Okay, alright, well, I'll follow up with that and, and try to get that information. So we could get language for that if we, if it's possible. Alright, so we can go down. So if you, it turns writing, yeah, he put this language in. Just to protect ourselves if, if for some reason they don't allow it, but.
Then we return back to the standard language.
Right, right. Yeah. So, so with that way, we still have at least, you know, ten percent affordability in there. Development standards, this was all consistent with what was in before. And then severability. And then the town vote. Um. So, um, I know Nick's been doing, and Cheyenne have been doing a lot of work on this, and, um, a lot of this language is the same language that would have been in the twenty-five percent plan. Cheryl, is there anything that you, that jumps out at you that you would, um, want to see amended? In this, were there items that were?
I haven't done a cross comparison between the Rapid and this. Um, so I don't know for sure whether there would be something I, I would, uh, I would want to change, um.
Yeah, everything was pretty mu- it was mostly the same except for obviously the, the inputs. You know, the, the lot size, the height, and so forth. But as far as the language, um, severability, administrative, you know, everything that we've gone through, other than those, the, the title of the districts and the, um, and the inputs.
Well, if we review the Rapid Transit compliant language, then we can see where the differences are and see if we wanted to incorporate any of them, um.
Do you have what your?
That was my, you, you all have it, because Nick sent it at, I believe, three twenty it was, so.
Yep.
So just for the purpose of time. Do you, but, alright, do you, do you have a redline version? Your redline markup, is that?
That's what, yes, that's what.
Okay.
What Nick sent to all of us at three twenty today, so, um.
So it does, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, so if you, um, in, intend to re-review the twenty-five percent Rapid, then we can look at it and compare if there's, if there are things that I marked up that we would want to incorporate into this ten percent, um, but I have not, I haven't done a markup of the, of the ten percent.
Okay, let's, um. Julia, can you pull that up to see if there's, um, if there were language changes that um, were made to the, to the text? That we could incorporate?
Oh, um, do you want to see the actual article?
Yeah, if you could. Pull that up.
For, are you talking about for Rapid Transit?
For the Rapid Transit, yeah, there's a red, Cheryl did a redline version, so we can just see the language changes to see what we would want to incorporate. Cheryl, you know what? Would it be helpful for, if you pull it up, and keep this on the screen, and we scroll through together? That might be easier, and then we can edit this document.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
Well, what, what if we just pull up the document that, um, the Rapid, that Nick sent out at three twenty-one? If we just go through that and look at the red changes, we could just say whether or not we agree that those should also be applied to the ten percent.
Okay.
Do we have to change it while we're here, or can we, can we?
I would be fine with that.
Because looking through it, I think we're gonna find that, um, a lot of these. Maybe applicable to both. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to see them side by side?
I think we could, I think we could look at the, uh, no, I think we just look at the document that Nick sent at three twenty-one, and we might be able to acknowledge that the changes in that one should also be changed in this one.
Are you able to do that, Julia?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm scrolling through the Rapid Transit, I'm just not seeing any markup.
Yeah, me neither.
Really?
So you have, you have to have the one that says, Tugaya said it's, and it has to be the one that was sent to three twenty-one.
Yeah.
I got one sent at three twenty, not a three twenty-one.
Well, that's, you have to have review, you have to have the review on to see the markup, I don't know what your settings are for Word.
The, the specific email from Nick read, "I attached some tract changes to the Rapid Transit text from Cheryl."
Yeah.
Got that. That's the one, if you open up that attached document, I, I, I see the tract changes in red.
Alright, they look purple to me, but.
Oh, really? Okay.
We have to download them. You have to download the document. Then it comes up green on mine.
Are you guys seeing this from Cheryl?
No.
I just have it on my own, um, my own computer.
We're still seeing the, um, the previous article, the ten percent article.
Yeah, Maggie's right, if you download it, it comes up.
Cheryl, do you want to try to, uh, share your screen? Would that be easier?
Uh, let me open it. Alright, can you see it?
Yep.
Yes.
Is it large enough?
Yep.
I, um, noted that they, Util had renamed, um, the Blue Hill, the Matapan Station District, the Blue Hill Ave Station. I just think that's very confusing, we've been talking about a Matapan Station District for three years now, and it's the same district. When I first read it, I thought he was talking about like the Blue Hill Ave, like triplex. And so, um, it will require the Util chart to be consistent with Matapan, but I, that's my, um, I called Nick about that actually, and, um, he agreed. Um.
But, but just on that point, isn't it, um, doesn't, isn't it tight and tight title, the Blue Hill Ave Station, the commuter rail station? Should we be consistent with what it's actually called?
It's just, the sub-district has been called Matapan Station for a long time, I think it's confusing to change the name of it at, at this point in time. Um, there's two stations, there's Matapan Station, and then there's the Blue Hill Ave Station down the road. The closer one is Matapan. Um, we're calling it the, you know, Elliott Street, et cetera. Um, those aren't close to the commuter rail station, so it, it seems to me that, uh, the consistency for people, talking about the public understanding the differences between what was done previously and what we're, what's being proposed here. I think the, changing the name of the district is confusing, but if you, if you disagree, then you could vote to keep it the way it is.
So that was a good point, that it's two stations, so that's correct, minus days.
Let's make sure, we'll just check to make sure these are all consistent, okay?
Yep, so, um, next is, um, making sure that we date the map. So that's on the same paragraph. This is the consistency of the naming of that sub-district. Design guidelines is a paragraph later in the document. So I, I felt that definition shouldn't have been stricken. It, uh, had been taken out from the twenty twenty-three version, so I put it back in.
Okay, so I would agree with that. We wanted to have um, that added back in, because we should comment on these as we go, so.
Alright, so.
So the first, we want to make sure that our districts are consistent with the language.
Right, so then, the map had a date. The guy, design guidelines has a definition. Section three A of spelling out that it's chapter forty-eight, the zoning act. I'm clearer about what that is.
Okay.
I didn't like using, um, in higher density, because it's still mid-rise. Um. I felt like all of the sub-districts that are allowing six stories are considered mid-rise. Um. It, in the applicability section, most of them have more than just what was included here, they have more definition of the area, so I added to be more consistent with those other districts something here to define this district better.
Yeah, I'm fine with those, yeah.
On the Rapid Transit, we had said that Granite Ave North would not have a parking space requirement. The way the chart is set up is maximum spaces. Um, so I felt as if we should leave maximum spaces and add a, a line for minimum spaces, and the minimum would be no minimum space requirement in this particular sub-district for the Rapid Transit. And then under bicycle storage, the requirement to have the bicycle storage be enclosed for residential, uh, makes a lot of sense, but on the commercial, it's oftentimes at the entrances into the commercial space and outdoors. So I added this sentence.
Cheryl, I just, while you're here, um, I'm just, I'm concerned that we had no, um, parking spaces per residential dwelling unit. This is under.
Yeah, that's what we.
Under maximum, under the parking spaces? If that would throw off the unit.
That's what we had, um, agreed to with Util last week.
But that was, yeah, that was in the.
Rapid Transit.
Plan, I'm just, I'm concerned it might throw off.
And, uh.
If we start fiddling with the parking spaces on the adjacent, it might throw off.
Correct, yeah, I, yeah, this is for the Rapid Transit.
Yeah, yeah, okay, right.
I think, um, you wouldn't ne- want to make that change here for the, um, ten percent. But I think you could make the bicycle parking change.
Yep, I agree, yeah.
I didn't think that these were necessary. Nick had flagged these, and they were designed for the Granite Ave South. I think he had put a question in whether we wanted to keep these in or take them out. Um, and I think they might be in both of the ten percent and the twenty-five percent. Uh, I don't think it's necessary for Granite Ave North to have these in.
Right?
I just added again, kind of a little more um, description to the, on the Paper Mill District, on the uniquely situated, uh, because it is uniquely situated, and that kind of justifies some of the other things that we had agreed to there. Um. Again, we had, this applies to the Rapid Transit on the parking, so just like Granite Ave North.
Yeah.
In fact, I should have put this same sentence here about the bicycle storage. And I didn't, that would be an add here. Um. This is the renaming of the Blue Hill Ave back to the Matapan Station, that carries through in a couple of places here. And then to your point, Maggie, this, I, um, I think this is where it had been included as both stations, and I think Nick had put this one in. Yeah. Um. Another place tracing that through. This is that same bicycle parking come, change. Um. The parkway. I added the, the commuter rail station here as well.
Yeah, that Nick had made that, yep.
Yeah, so he made it in the other one, in the Matapan, but he didn't put it in the parkway, so it seems like it should be in both. Um. There's some numbering corrections. Instead of just units per acre here, for consistency, we, we've had maximum units per acre. And this is the Randolph Ave Access Road, uh, sub-district. Um. This is before we got the Util presentation, which, these had been blank before on these, um, setbacks. Though we would probably want to make these consistent with what Util submitted. Although I, I do think a, a greater front yard setback here, like we talked about last week, so that there, the buildings would be further away from the residential buildings up front Randolph Ave. So I don't know that Util made that change, we have to double check that. In Milton Station's Central Ave, so that's the the three districts that comprise the, the Milton Station, East, West, and Bridge. I had suggested some different setbacks here based on the kind of conditions that exist. Again, um, I think Util's got those a little different than. Again, I think UTIL's got those a little different than that, so we could be consistent and keep with UTIL. This is the bicycle storage. This is, I think, East Milton Square is the same thing in terms of the setbacks. Our business districts don't really have the setbacks. The historic buildings are pretty much right on the sidewalk. The building meets the sidewalk without the setback. I think previously, we had put larger setbacks in just to make sure that East Milton Square overlay was more attractive than this. But I don't know that those considerations need to be held for this. And then again, this is East Milton Square in the, is not included in the 10%, so this is all related to the Rapid Transit on this. Those were next changes. I have made a couple of minor changes here that are in red on my screen. And that's it.
Okay. All right, so I would agree, you know, I think most of those, and to be consistent, I would agree with those changes that are, that are relevant. I think we just want to make sure that what we're labeling our districts align with what our maps say. So, which I believe in the adjacent plan, they, they do. Because they, UTIL hadn't changed the maps for the adjacent plan. But we can double check that.
Is Nick going to send us a complete package that would include the zoning language, the map, and the Excel spreadsheet of all the parcels?
Yeah, I can request that. Yep, so basically incorporating everything we have in our slide presentation with the correct, the maps all corrected, inconsistent, the zoning language, and the Excel spreadsheet for the package that would be presented to the warrant committee and the select board.
So we're not piecemealing it? It's just nice to get one complete package?
Correct. And I would also say we could, Cheryl, what do you, what do you think is the easiest to send? Nick obviously has your document, because he shared it, but that we ask that he makes the changes that are relevant to the adjacent plan using your amended language? Or do you want to go through it? I, I don't want to ask you to do it.
No, I don't plan to do it for the 10%, so however you think it's best to have it done.
Right, okay, so I'll ask Nick to go through. Was there any? Did everybody agree with the language changes that Cheryl made? That would be, that were relevant, like the bicycle?
Yes, yes. Yes, I think there was only one that, so which one? There was one that was not applicable to both. It was one that we said we wouldn't apply to both. It might have been a trying to find it now.
And while he's looking, I just double checked all of the zoning, the referenced districts are all consistent with what we have in our adjacent, the plan that UTIL put together for us. So I think those changes were made, Cheryl, with the 25%, but but Granite Ave North, Paper Mill Site, Blue Hill Ave Station, Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, Elliott Street Corridor, and 711 Randolph Ave, that's, that's the way the language reads. So we don't need to make any of those changes on that first paragraph. But you said you wanted the date.
I, I don't think the Blue Hill Ave Station should be called Blue Hill Ave Station. It should be called Matapan Station. Is that what you were referring to?
I'm just, I'm saying what we, what UTIL had labeled it and what's in our language is consistent.
Right, so I just think that's going to be very confusing for the public, that's all. And when I spoke to Nick about that this afternoon, because I said,
Okay.
I, I hadn't seen the UTIL presentation yet when he sent that, and I said, is this, is this the triplex? I thought we're not doing the triplex. And I think that's the same confusion people are going to have when they see it, if we don't get the language change back to.
So call the Blue Hill Ave Station, Matapan Station.
Right.
Yep, okay, so as long as we're consistent in both, I'm fine with that.
I had the same reaction as Cheryl. I, I thought it was referring to the triplex, so, you know, and, and the counts are, it's either called Matapan, and you include the Blue Hill units in Matapan, or you do vice versa, but.
Right. Okay, I, that's easy to change. UTIL can make that change on the maps.
Yeah, I totally agree with the Matapan wording, and it was a good catch on Cheryl's part.
There was one item, I can't find it now. There was one item that we said was not applicable to both.
It was the no parking requirement for Granite Ave North and Paper Mill. Actually, it's not Paper Mill. Paper Mill, there is no parking requirement, but there is a parking requirement for Granite Ave North in the 10%. So you'd want to make, you'd want to make that change in the Paper Mill Site. That's how you were getting the density up. They took the parking away. But you, it's, they had kept it in the Granite Ave North for the 10%.
I'm just nervous about changing parking requirements, that we would throw anything, any of the unit count off.
I'm actually afraid of the parking maximum. I wouldn't want to deter.
Maxims, yeah.
You're really tying someone's hands, saying, you know, that there's a maximum. What if they want to build a few less units, but allow two cars per unit, which I think is the most marketable, but that's just my thinking. Watch the maximum.
The, it's the language that was there from 2023, the maximum.
I understand that. I just don't agree with it. I don't think maximum is, is a good thing to have in there. Whenever it was put in there, I just personally think that it's wrong, because you're tying developers' hands.
So maybe definitely for the Granite Ave Subdistrict, I kind of agree with Jim, and that sort of has been our argument on other developments too, is just the, the developer's going to do what is marketable.
Forcing him to do one spot per unit, he might just not do it, or she, or they.
Because I would think at that district, you probably would need more than one car.
Juliette, would you mind pulling, pulling the, the 10% plan back up? So we could look at those parking real quick, go through those real quickly for each district? Here it comes. Okay. So yeah, we can leave it on this. So we have Granite Ave North maximum parking spaces per unit.
One and a half.
One and a half, I'm sorry. So do we want to just change that to read minimum?
So we do have minimum underneath, but it's.
No, it'll change the compliance model completely, because now you're going to, you have to have something on the parking, which sets, that's how the compliance model works. It calculates parking requirements. I, I don't think that's something you can, you can change. Well, all I did with the other one was make it consistent with what was agreed to at the last discussion with UTIL. But changing this would change how many, the unit capacity.
So I think we should leave it, but.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm just looking at it from a practicality standpoint, you know, if, what's a one bed I'm going to rent for? $2,500 bucks a month? Is that what the going rate is? It's got to be close to that. So if you got to pay $2,500 bucks for a one bed, that's 30 Gs a year after tax income, right? You probably have to be making three times that. You know, one third of your income goes to rent, two thirds goes to everything else, so that's 90 grand a year. If a young couple living there, it's going to be two incomes to make that 90 grand probably. And two incomes will probably require two cars. That's just my thinking, so it's, it's kind of un, it's not practical to max it out, is, is, and ju- just because I've been in that situation. Not as a renter, but as a landlord, I had a hell of a time trying to rent an apartment in Milton with one car parking. It was very detrimental.
So Cheryl, if we did, if we made it a minimum, it could be up to, it could be up to the property developer, how many units they wanted to create. We, we're not forcing them to create all the units that are allowed for?
I think the maximum is the key that is in the compliance model, because it, it subtracts out what the requirements are for land area for parking, the way I understand it's been explained by UTIL. So it will make a difference in the zone capacity. So I don't think you can change this without consultation with UTIL.
Okay, all right, so I'll ask Nick to get back us on, on that, to us on that question. But for now, we'll leave that. Okay, all right. So is that, does that sound good to everybody, that we vote to send this to the warrant committee for their review, subject to incorporation of Cheryl's zoning language amendments, where, where appropriate, where applicable, update our maps, request UTIL makes, gets our consist, our maps consistent, and, and, and we date that, and then we have an Excel spreadsheet for all of the units. And we reach out to UTIL for the question on parking.
An Excel spreadsheet for all the properties?
For all the properties, yes.
Meredith, it looks like, Julia's hand raised.
Yeah, Julia?
I didn't mean to do that, sorry.
That's okay. All right.
So moved. But enough.
Does that sound good to everyone at this point?
Sounds great.
I'll make a motion to vote to send this MBTA communities, multi-family overlay district, adjacent community bylaw to the warrant committee for their review, subject to Cheryl's amendments, along with the updated maps and Excel spreadsheet for all the affected properties.
Second.
Second, okay. All right, roll call.
Before you do the roll call?
Yeah, discussion, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make a comment. I'm going to vote no, but I want to say why I'm voting no, because I've, this board has promised for a year and a half. In fact, in 2023, it was promised to residents in the town that, you know, just with a little more time, the board could come up with compliant zoning. And fully a year and a half later, and $50,000 later, the board's deciding to submit only a 10% plan, and I can't endorse that, and so I plan to vote no.
Stand, okay. With that, we'll have a roll call vote. Maggie?
Yes, after doing our research and in consultation with our consultant, I vote yes.
Okay, Jim?
After realizing how bad 25% is for the town, I'll vote yes.
Okay, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl?
No.
All right, and myself, yes. Thank you very much. And thank you all. I really appreciate it. This is a challenge, and it's a challenge for our community. And we'll continue to work on seeking compliance, so. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Before the motion to adjourn, I'm going to again acknowledge that we asked UTIL to do a lot of work for us last Thursday for tonight, and we didn't discuss it tonight. And I sure hope that you plan to have that on the agenda for the next meeting, and that you plan to personally thank UTIL for doing that work, even though it wasn't discussed.
Absolutely. I, no, it's been great, and I don't think it's a waste of time. I, I really don't. Because we need to be prepared to have a backup, and, and I think we are well positioned should we absolutely need to do the 25, so. Thank you, I appreciate that again.
And I'd like to say, Meredith, nice job tonight for walking us through the 10%. Pay, well, you know, it was a, it was a logistically tough meeting, and thank you for, for getting us through it. And Cheryl, thank you for all your edits. There was a lot of work also.
And unfortunately, we are, you know, against a real tight timeline here, so I'm glad we're submitting this. We can always do more, but I think we at least need to demonstrate that we are, we are trying to work to, to create zoning in Milton, so. All right, was there a second to that? Adjourn? Motion to adjourn, was there a motion?
Well, I said so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Again, Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie? And myself, yes. Good night, good night all.
Good night.